Let us know when we're on.
Mitch, we're gonna have to do that outside of this meeting. We'll just make a note of it.
Okay.
To revise that.
Okay, welcome. This is the Shastbury Select Board. We are still in the midst of a budget workshop. So, welcome, everyone. We have Bill Fisk at the table, our town treasurer. And we're just reviewing some of our budget line items. And if you would bear with us while we do that, we'll get back to the full agenda in a few moments.
Okay.
All right.
We will do that.
Pardon?
We will make that adjustment.
Okay. Is everyone comfortable with that?
Yep.
Okay, great. Now, Margie, what else?
We have other questions about balance sheets.
Oh, yes, yes.
And reserve fund balances.
Yep, that's right.
And Bill, did you bring your balance sheets? Okay. Now, I was noting down under the more active reserve fund. We've been making transfers into and out of, if I go down to the bottom of our current budget. Bill, why don't we just go down through these and then you can confirm? I've got the reappraisal reserve fund. Or actually, maybe you should read it in your order to me. Do you want to do that?
I'm gonna work from the town report from last year.
Yeah, that's the order that mine are in.
The transfers to reserves I have start with the audit reserve.
Yep.
Which, these don't correspond to the fund numbers in the general ledger, so we're gonna be shuffling back and forth.
Right.
But in any event, that was budgeted for $2,500 for the last budget.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know.
Which one is that?
The audit reserve.
Audit reserve, okay, yeah. Another one of those copies? Is that, you're all flipping through that? Is that an up-to-date?
Here's an actual. These are actuals.
Is that what's? I could use one of those copies if that's what you're all flipping through.
I don't know what Bill's looking at. I was just going back to an old budget report that I had.
Oh, all right, okay. I didn't know if there was a new one.
I just ran off one this afternoon in anticipation showing up here.
I'll grab my old one.
Did you decide last time that we should put 4,000 in the audit reserve?
Yes, we did.
As I mentioned last time, none of these appropriations have been made at this point. Typically do them around the end of the calendar year after we get the tax collections resolved and the school tax payments taken care of and fund the community appropriations and the transfers to these reserve accounts. So, they haven't been transferred as of yet, but that's on the short list of things to do.
So, I had a September 30th balance in the audit reserve fund of about $5,000.
Mm-hmm.
That tally with you?
Yes.
Okay. And the reappraisal reserve fund, I had a balance of about $119,000. But I want to make sure that we read that report correctly. Reappraisal reserve fund, the CD, the reappraisal CD has $119,000. That was as of September, the end of September.
And that's approximately where it is now. The interest rates on these things, we're not seeing much.
But separate from that is the money market fund that Chittenden, and I don't, I didn't know whether to include that in reappraisal or not.
How much is that, Margie?
$69,000.
$69,000. And then the education fund.
And then the education fund is $2,400. So, the total assets is $190,000.
Yeah, in round numbers.
In round numbers. So, that's okay. Coal Hall Reserve Fund, I had the end of September balance of about $33,600. Coal Hall Renovation Fund, $280. Now, the Coal Hall Renovation Fund was $33,628, thereabouts. The Shastbury Garage Reserve was $56,300 in round numbers. Okay. Okay. And then there was an Economic Development Reserve Fund of a minor balance there. The Highway Equipment Reserve Fund, for the purchase of highway equipment, had a balance in a money market fund of $6,100. But I have a question about whether or not a $5,000 amount.
Yep, yep.
That was intended for Howard Park.
Yeah, there's a real, there's some real confusion around this one, Bill. I'm not quite sure what happened. The, let's see if I can find it in our... You know, we had a problem with the 1213 budget year.
The actuals and the budget figures?
When I picked it, picked up on this, yeah. If you look at, let's see. On March 6th, 2012, shall the town appropriate 5,000 to the Equipment Reserve Fund? So, that was yes. That passed. That was just the Equipment Reserve Fund. And we didn't, let's see. That, I believe, was the amount that was supposed to be for the mower, for the park.
The Equipment Reserve Fund?
Because there was only 1,000, the Equipment Reserve Fund, yeah. Shall the town appropriate 1,000 to the Park Reserve Fund? And that also passed. That was the year that we told the people that we were going to be purchasing a new mower and that we had set $5,000 aside in that budget year towards the mower. And the $1,000 was supposed to be in the Park Reserve Fund for grant match. So, then, but what ended up happening was that the Park Reserve Fund gets noted here as $6,000, when it really should have been $1,000, which is the actual. And then the $5,000 that's up there in the Equipment, well, it actually, it's under Highway Equipment Reserve Fund, but the people actually voted it to the Equipment Reserve Fund.
Equipment Reserve?
Well, that was the wording.
There's an, yeah, there's an Equipment Replacement Reserve Fund. Yeah, you're right. That's what the title is.
Yeah, so.
We should change the name of that one.
That $5,000, I guess it should stay in that fund, but then we had this year, let's see. Park Reserve Fund, this current year, we said $6,000. And five of that, again, was to go towards the mower.
So, in the Equipment Replacement Fund, which is Fund 240, the money market is now $6,100 and 5,000 of that appears to be for the Howard Park tractor.
Right, that's right.
Well, if you prefer to see all that in the Park Fund, that's an easy enough transfer to make.
Just put one, one fund?
Yeah, I think it, I think for clarity, it's based on what happened with, you know, it was obviously confusing the way it, the way it went out there.
Okay, it's an easy enough fix to make.
Okay.
So, are we putting the 6,000 in the Park Reserve Fund versus 1,000 and 5,000?
Well, we're putting 5,000, as I understand it, from the Equipment Reserve Fund down into the Park Reserve.
But not in the actual budget, are we?
No, this is the transfers to reserve.
Okay, in the transfers.
Unless we're ready to, well, see, we thought we were gonna have the money to buy that tractor, I think.
Oh, okay, so we're gonna.
This year.
Okay, so what you're saying, Karen, next?
No, no, excuse me, we're not, we're not. We were gonna have to put more money into it.
So, in the current fiscal year?
Yeah, please tell me.
That's why I'm trying to clarify more than, more than make a definitive statement. The current fiscal year, we want to move $5,000 from the Equipment Replacement Fund to the Park Fund because when the budget was set, the intent was to budget $5,000 for park equipment, if you will, or more.
All right, so is a zero, that mean that we should, in this town report coming up, should we illustrate a zero in the approved budget for the Equipment Replacement Fund? For '14, for this current year?
Well, no, not for the current year that we're in.
Because right now, on this.
This is, this is all based on what happened in '12, '13, okay?
Okay.
In March of '13, I mean, we did have that in there. We had it in both, the Park Fund was, let's see, reappraisal, not reappraisal, excuse me.
Are we trying to get rid of one of these line items?
In our worksheet?
No. We're trying to figure out how, no.
I'm not getting rid of one.
We're trying to clarify basically how much money we have for this, for the lawnmower up at the park. So that we know how much we have to approve or propose in the budget for 2015. Because we still need a little bit more.
Karen, is there any way that we could have a fund to get one machine that we could use for the sidewalk and the park for more? In other words, to get one machine that you can use with a snow blower on it to do the sidewalks in the wintertime and then use the same machine, put a mower deck on it, and mow the park?
I don't know, but I don't know that that's, that we need to figure that out right now with Bill here. I know you've talked about that before, and I'm not sure of the answer to that.
Okay.
I know that Terry brought before the board a snow machine that was $4,400 that seemed to be what everyone around is using, and we can get 5,000 for the thing that we've got out there that doesn't work.
Well, I mean, I'm just saying, try to get one thing to do everything if you can.
Well, if we can, but again, I think right now we need to clarify.
All right, well, I'll just.
Where we want the money for this. And actually, somebody, Mitch had asked the question about the highway equipment. We actually did appropriate $5,000 to the Highway Equipment Reserve Fund for this current year, and that will go into that.
But you know, there, we're, that's a miss, boy, we don't have a fund called Highway Equipment Fund.
No, you have an Equipment Fund.
It's just Equipment Fund. We have a Highway Emergency Reserve.
You call it Highway Equipment Reserve Fund in your budget, but on the general ledger, we have an Equipment Fund.
It's called Equipment Replacement Fund.
Replacement Fund.
Okay, okay. But I'm assuming that, again, that's got, Margie's saying, 6,000 something or other in there.
In the current fiscal year?
And I, yeah.
All right.
Well, that's in, that's what's in the fund right now.
Right.
Oh, but you're talking, okay, but that $6,000 is from the fiscal year ending '13.
Right.
You budgeted amounts for fiscal year '14, which haven't been transferred to the fund yet.
Correct.
And you're talking about fiscal year '15 budget.
Right.
So, that, we just, we've got three years in play.
Yes, yes, yes. That's right, that's right. But what you're going, what we, what we're trying to decide is whether or not that $5,000 that's sitting in the Highway Equipment Reserve Fund, which was designated for a new mower at the Howard Park, should be transferred down into the Park Reserve Fund.
As illustrated in the town reports.
Yes.
To be distributed, which is our worksheet that goes into the budget.
Right.
So, it's gonna look different than what was approved in the year of the report this appeared, the budget appeared there. Do we have to decide that right this second?
No, we don't. I just wanted to be sure that.
We don't lose sight of that.
We know that that money is there because that's a big piece of how much we're putting aside for the next year.
We just need to figure out how we're gonna illustrate that.
Okay.
So, I think, Bill, that the figures I'm reading down the reserve fund seem to rule what you've got.
Now, I'm, this is the, this is the '14 fiscal year-end budget that I'm looking at. You.
Oh, I'm looking at budget reports from.
You're looking at fiscal year ending, ending '14, right. None of the funding has happened, so there's no activity showing up.
Right, no, no, that's exactly right.
That's what she's saying, balance of '930, '13.
I'm saying, all up and down, so this is, yeah, you're right. This is the '931, '930, '13 balance, which is effective, really, July, June 30th, plus a little bit of interest.
Right.
So, the Garage Reserve Fund, that was, that's of major interest. The Greater Reserve Fund is not of real interest right now, but we do have a little over $30,000 there as of last June. Now, the Paving Reserve Fund has basically about $52 in it, and we're gonna, right now, we've already budgeted to start with a sizable transfer in there to try to come up with our local share for the existing paving grant. And the Sidewalk Reserve Fund, I think we had some questions about. I have a, I noted that we have about $40,000 in there. That's Fund 270. But we had, this is what you and I.
The report you're looking, you're talking about is, the report that you're looking at has an accrual in it, there's a receivable sitting on the balance sheet, which has since been adjusted, so that, that receivable was accrued as of '630, '13, was collected in the fiscal year ending '14. In addition, we received another $9,000 in fiscal '14. So, there's only 9,000 of revenue when you get done with all of this in fiscal '14.
So, does that mean?
So, the receivable goes away, that's basically.
Receivable goes away, did it, but it's added to the sidewalk savings asset line item?
No, it's already been added to the sidewalk savings.
It was already added to it.
Yes.
So, it is.
Yes, it's the revenue, if you look at the, it's basically reducing the revenue for that fiscal year.
And then below that, Karen and I were confused about another asset line called Phase 2, Phase 3 donations plus reimbursements.
Well, that's, that's a historical artifact, and, you know, we could probably, what we should do is sit down sometime and go through all of these and retitle some of these accounts, but that is a historical artifact.
But that has, that cash is there, though.
It is there, yeah, there's no doubt about that.
It is there. Of $5,955.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. All right, so the sidewalk savings asset line is, is at about $26,000. And that's what we needed to clarify.
Wait a minute, so you're saying $26,000, and that's without the, okay, so we've got $26,000.
That's without this year's set aside.
Without this year's, okay.
Which one's that?
And we have, and at this point, do we have some?
Sidewalk?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Is that current, Margie, in terms of expenses? And do we have any, any reimbursements out to the state yet that we're waiting on?
No, no other outstanding reimbursements. There again, I think maybe we can meet with Bill.
Okay.
Outside of the meeting?
Yep, we can do that. All right.
Any other questions you had for Bill, Matt?
Did anybody else have a question for Bill related to the budget, the date?
We're gonna get his opinion on how often to do an audit. We talked about that at the last meeting. We settled on six years, because that's kind of the cycle we're on.
Are you asking my opinion?
Yes.
I think you should have one done every year. That's my professional opinion.
And you don't get a break by doing it every year, though. You, I mean, it's.
Are they cheaper if you do them every year instead of every six years?
No, because when you have an audit done, that's done every six years, as an example, the auditors will have to establish a beginning balance, and typically, they only report on one year. They don't report on six years. They don't audit six years. So, what they'll do is they'll attempt to establish beginning balances as of the beginning of the year they're auditing, and that's, that's work. A one-year fee would probably should reflect that, although if you're going to do that, if you're gonna have audits every year, you're effectively gonna be paying, paying for that each year, because you still have to audit the entire year. You still have to bring the activity forward. And I'm not, I'm not currently in the auditing business, but I will tell you that, you know, I think you're better off engaging an auditing firm for a two- or three-year commitment for audits to get your best pricing. A one-year audit's nobody's idea of a good time in the auditing business because of all the, the costs you incur and the effort you incur to get familiar with the entity. If you know you're coming back, you can spread some of that over more than one period. I think, you know, in terms of organizational, the integrity of the organization's financial statements, having, having an outside audit is very appropriate. I mean, the schools all have them, but they're required to have them. Does it cost money? Absolutely. It's not.
Like you said, you get a, you know, the economy of skill, if you could get a commitment for five years, and they know they're gonna come back every year, they might.
Well, you certainly would get, I think you'd get your best pricing. I've never seen anybody go out for a five-year commitment, though typically, they go out for two years, three years. And, you know, there's a theory in, that you should consider rotating auditing firms. Now, I was in the auditing business, I never said that was a good idea, but there is a theory that says that you should consider that as a board, not become too, too comfortable or have the auditor become too comfortable with you. But a lot of firms rotate principals, the people responsible for conducting the audit, they'll have a different audit principal or partner, whatever they call it in their terminology. So, you get some of that, and public companies are required to turn over the people who manage the auditing. Or every, excuse me, not every year, but every couple of years.
The school says they pay about in the $6,000 range per year for auditing their $3 million budget. I believe we're paying every six years, two or three times that number for 195.
And we paid almost 20, I think, for the last one.
Three times that to budget, to audit our much smaller budgets.
Well, much smaller, but more complex, I think. You know, we have a lot of funds. You know, I think there was, you know, I've been trying to improve the internal reporting, and that should facilitate auditing. I would be very surprised if someone came back and quoted $6,000, thought of the town of Shastbury.
Do you think, do you want to get closer to the right answer?
I, Tim, I wouldn't want to venture a guess. I just wouldn't. You know, I've been away from it long enough to know that I'd be, anything I said, I know it'll be repeated, and I'll be in trouble if I'm wrong. So, I'd rather not, and I just don't have a good basis for saying that. You know, you might, you might see what comparably sized towns, comparable complexity or anything for their audits, you know, as an example. But the best thing to do is get a proposal, and go and solicit proposals.
And what's the upside and downside of, what's the downside of doing audits every six years instead of every year?
Well, I don't, I think you don't get the assurance that you're, you're gonna get good quality financial statements annually. You know, if you look at the audited, in a lot of towns, you know, that don't really present their audited financial statements, I don't think we did the last time we had an outside audit, the same way that we produce our annual report. If you look at the town of Bennington, for example, their audited financial statements are embedded in their town report. And so, if, if, if audited financial statements are supposed to be the appropriate means of communicating the activities of the town in a financial sense, and that anyone in the, in the public finance sector, if you will, whether they're bankers or auditors or bond companies or town officials, can look at those and understand the concepts that underlie those statements. That's the advantage. You get another advantage is that you have an independent, educated group evaluating the efficacy of the controls and how well everybody does their job, including you. But I certainly, you know, I'd certainly recommend welcome professional feedback. I think it enhances the quality of the product. You could.
Maybe get suggestions from them on what to do differently and better and so forth.
Yeah, I'm sure I could. You know, I think, you know, I strive to understand that. I attend continuing education programs at the League and the Government Finance Officers Association, but I certainly would benefit, I think, I think that, you know, not me personally, but the town would benefit, and my position as treasurer would be enhanced by doing that.
Does anyone have any other questions? Just looking at the time, we do need to move forward. Anything else, Margie, for Bill right now? Thank you so much, Bill, for being here.
You're welcome.
All right, we're gonna move to our regular agenda. As I say, we met, the board first met at 5:00 this evening. We're working our way through the budget. More to go. So, I'll call the regular meeting to order. Does anyone have a conflict of interest with anything that's on the agenda? We have approval of minutes. We have three sets of minutes. Did you all have a chance to review them?
Yes.
We have the minutes.
You didn't get them.
We have the minutes of November 18th, 25th, and December 2nd. I would ask for a motion to approve.
I did have some.
Well, if we can get a motion and a second, then we can go over any corrections. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of November 18th?
I'll move.
Do we have a second for discussion?
I'll second, I didn't look down there.
Okay.
Do we need to table them?
Do, yeah. Did you not have a chance to look at them either, Ken?
No.
Okay, we, what about the November 25th?
I got that one.
Okay. You have the 25th?
Yeah.
And did you get December 2nd? Have you reviewed those?
Uh, no.
Pardon?
I don't have a 22nd, uh, the 2nd.
Okay. Okay. Do we want to table these until our next meeting?
Yeah, everybody needs to have read it, don't they?
Yeah, yeah. I'm not comfortable with...
Right.
All right. All right, we'll table those to the next meeting, then, all three.
Did Tim... Oh, okay. You have comments? You want to email me?
Um, yeah. Should I bring those up now?
I think we can email. I think if you want to email them before we put... Because I have some corrections, too. I'll send you, Margie.
Yep.
Okay. Approval of warrants. Is that what Bill brought over there?
Yeah, one check warrant.
We have one?
One check warrant in the amount of $72,422.
Do we have a motion to approve?
A move.
Second.
Tim and Mitch. Items over $1,000. American Rock Salt in the amount of about $2,300. Barney Construction, that's gravel, $1,800. The Sheriff's Department, $1,290. That's their December bill. Daly's, $5,400. I'm guessing that that might be...
Sand and salt.
Sand or salt. Not salt, but sand.
Or salt, sand, rather.
Yep. Let's see. John Ray and Son, $1,239. Reynolds and Son, $6,618. Is that fire? Fire equipment? We have the North Bennington Water Service charge of $41,000. And Wells Communication, $2,100. Is that radios?
Yes.
Maybe? That's for the fire company also?
Service.
Service.
One or the other.
Oh, yeah. Yep, service and materials. Yep. Okay. And again, that amount is $72,422.15. And we have a motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Okay, there you go, Margie. Public comments? Anyone have any public comments? Sure, please come up. Yep. And just to remind the board, because we are on camera and people are trying to listen to us, don't forget your mics. Have them... Could you come right up?
Sure.
Could you state your name?
Yes, Jared De La Roca. I live on Mountain View Drive in Shatsbury.
De La Roca.
Yes, two words. D-E-L-L-A, space, R-O-C-C-A. I apologize, it's my first time, so I'm a little bit nervous.
That's okay. I was going to pull this a little closer.
Oh, thank you very much, Ms. Maljor. First of all, I wanted to thank you all for serving on the Select Board. I know it's a lot of time to serve on all the individual committees, and so for those of us who don't have that kind of time, I really appreciate everything you guys do for the town. I also want to thank Tim in particular, as a new community member myself in February and a parent of two small children. You're kind of an inspiration when you participate in the school board and openly push yourself forward to participate in all the inner workings. As my kids get to that age, I'm looking forward to hopefully following in your footsteps. I've made my opinions known about the garage. I think if all the garage committee members had been pulling in the same direction, I think the vote would have passed, and I think it's unfortunate the way it turned out. Would it be inappropriate to ask a couple of informational questions at this time about the way taxes are broken down between the school board and the select board? I'm particularly interested to find out what percentage of taxes are driven from school board versus the town.
Oh, sure. I mean...
And Bill is right there, too.
Our treasurer is right here.
78% of your tax bills goes to the schools. Both the local school and the Mount Anthony one. The other smaller percentage is the town.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And then, so as the budget goes together, everybody appears to have an opportunity to voice their opinion at the select board on the individual agenda items. So I would think that everyone has an opportunity to say if they disapprove of an amount, or they believe an amount should be larger or smaller, that they have the opportunity to do so. So I would ask, if I may ask, Ms. Maljor, I'd like to hear Ken Harrington's opinion that as the budget is going forward, can you tell this town members and those that are watching on Cat TV if you will be supporting the final budget as it's put together?
We haven't got it put together yet.
But as you have your opportunity to voice approval or disapproval...
I've worked with all the board members on everything that we're working on right now, and I'm not exactly sure when the budget will be completed.
Okay, so we're, as community members, have to then wonder whether or not the entire select board may or may not approve of what is put forward from the select board?
Right. I mean, at this point, you know, as I mentioned earlier to the audience and those who are watching us, we've been working on this now since, well, starting in November, on the budget. And our hope is to be actually warning a budget on January 7th, I think, is the drop-dead date. Maybe not...
That's earlier than you.
Maybe not drop-dead. We'll have to struggle.
Maybe.
That's our optimistic date. So we still have a lot of work to do. And, you know, all board members have been working.
Absolutely. And then the...
Give and take.
The vote would be approximately March, is that?
The town's vote?
I'm sorry, the town's vote. Yes, I apologize.
Yes, that's the first Tuesday in March.
Okay, so there's two months in between the warning of the budget approximately and the vote, in which we will know...
That's right.
...the opinions of the board members.
Oh, sure. Oh, you'll know as soon as we, you know, the board will have to vote on that budget in January, early January.
Okay.
Right.
That's what I wanted to know. I appreciate... Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And thank you everyone for serving. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Are there any other public comments? Anything that's not on the agenda?
Yeah, I'm John Groff. I'm old and old. I wanted to comment and perhaps ask a question with regard to the recent vote. And I've been reading about the objections or what seem to be...
Would you like to come up, John? Just again, this is for the benefit of folks who are watching us. We've heard that the sound is not great in this room, so we try to...
Yeah, so I've been reading about what seemed to be, you know, reasonably recent concerns or objections with respect to the location that was originally proposed for the new garage. And I've come to learn that Mr. Harrington, who's obviously a select board member, may actually own or have an interest in property that actually abuts that site. Now, I don't know if that's a fact, but if that's a fact, the question I had is, is that something that is required... It was disclosed or required to be disclosed? Is there a conflict of interest process that would result from, you know, from that disclosure?
I'm not aware of one. I mean, I think anybody that had looked at a map of that area would see who the property owners are. Ken Harrington and his brother Phil own, do own property that has, you know, forever abutted the town municipally-owned transfer station and previous landfill. So I don't know. I, you know, it was never anything that was identified.
The question that comes to my mind, and I certainly do not want to imply any suspicion of anything inappropriate or any kind of conflict on anyone. However, it just seemed that the main objections were coming from Ken with respect to the location, which, having attended many meetings quite a while ago, it seemed that the location had been finalized, and it seemed that it made sense that it was on land that the town already owned, and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So it seemed, it feels like quite a setback to now be searching for a site for this garage at this stage of the game. And so when I heard about this, I wondered if that was a conflict and how the board felt about it, basically.
Well, you know, Ken might like to...
I never opposed that site up there.
Okay.
That's right.
I thought I read that in the papers.
No, actually, I feel that there's some people over here next door that want this land next door. That, I mean, then we own the land up there.
Right.
Why, it makes no sense to me to spend, I don't know, $110,000...
Right.
...to buy this land next door when you already own land. I mean, that's foolish.
Then I may have misread it, or I may have misread it, but that was the impression that people were getting.
Yeah, I mean, we do own that. My brother and I do own that property next door. And my father before me.
Okay.
But there's, you know, like I say, I have no opposition to that up there.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments? Tom? Tom, you want to come up, please? Thank you. You could just state your name for folks now. Margie, it's Jennifer.
My name is Tom Huncherick Hite. You know how to spell that? It's kind of...
I do.
I think that was an interesting question that John brought up about the possible conflict of interest. And we, or the board adopted a new ethics policy. And after perusing that ethics policy and understanding what John was saying, again, I'm just wondering, isn't it the responsibility? I know, being on the DRB, it's the responsibility of each member to disclose any type of conflict of interest because of a perception issue that may exist. And I'm just wondering how applicable that ethics policy is in this particular case with that question that John asked.
You know, it's an interesting question. I guess I... It certainly was nothing that I thought of, because I think of a conflict of interest as, in our definition, as someone who would be benefiting themselves from an action that would be taken. And it's unclear to me, at least on the surface. I could be very wrong, and people could certainly interpret it differently, but I wouldn't see how there could be any benefit to the town, you know, making further use of the property that they already own. But I don't know. Do any of the board members have any comments?
I guess this would be for Tom and John, was the perceived perception of conflict, I guess I can't think of any other way to say it, that Ken was, might have been opposed to the garage because he didn't want his property values damaged by the town garage being put there?
Well, I think that's a very good example, or a hypothetical situation that could possibly exist. I think my question is, if we back up to maybe a 50,000-foot view, when we sit as board members, and let me be more specific, when I sit as a board member on the DRB, we go over one of the agenda items, is there a conflict of interest? There have been cases where I have been an abutting neighbor to certain issues that were brought before the board, and I had to divulge that information. The board as a whole discussed that to see if there was any potential conflict or perception of conflict, and the decision was made. In light of the fact that we now have a new process or procedure that was adopted by the select board, where these conflicts of interest would be brought before the board, discussed, a vote would be taken as to whether an individual should be recused. I didn't see that taking place in this particular incident. So you're right, in that hypothetical situation, it could be perceived that Mr. Harrington may have had an interest. And because he is a part of this board, I'm just as curious as John as to why that was never brought forth, and why this was never discussed by the board, and why it wasn't brought forth by Mr. Harrington.
Why is my abutting that property got anything to do with my opinion on that building?
Well, I'm...
And my opinion on that, whether the town should or should not have built that building, was as much as anything else, the $400,000 interest that was going to be on that.
No, my question, again, that's being very specific. I'm saying, from a general procedural standpoint, it should have been, it possibly should have been brought forth and divulged, and the board should have discussed what the details are, quite frankly, is beyond the scope of my question.
What you're suggesting is beyond anything that I consider even rational.
Well, I know, I do see Tom's point. And again, you know, I guess I would just say that it was, I guess it was an oversight. If you... I don't think... It certainly, as a board member at the time, and, you know, we had a previous board chair, it certainly wasn't anything that came to my mind as a conflict. I see now that it, you know, I mean, it's all about perception.
Yes, absolutely.
And I think frankly, this is a good discussion. Because it brings, you know, it brings the community in and say, hey, you know what? We're seeing something that maybe you're not seeing that you... Because, you know, we all knew where the property was, and yet a lot of people clearly in town don't even, still, maybe to this moment, don't even know where that property is. So I do understand, we do have policies regarding conflict of interest. You're absolutely right about that. And I can see that some people may perceive that even though you're just an abutting property owner, that you could have a conflict based on what activity might be going on next door to you. So I take it to heart. I... Tim?
Yeah, if I could just say, if it alleviates any suspicion, having sat with Ken through all of the budget, the garage committee meetings, I never heard Ken express any reservations about the site. His reservations were always about cost, not always, but mostly about cost. And I would, I guess, just as a personal opinion, say I'm prepared to take him at his word on that, and believe that in terms of the health of the town and trying to move forward, I don't think there's anything to be gained by worrying too much that Ken voted against that because of a conflict related to his abutting property. I think everything that I saw from him told me that it was about the cost, mostly about the cost, and that I'm prepared to take his word on that. I agree that probably should have been brought up, but I would, from what I know and what I've seen of the interactions that took place, I don't think there's anything to be gained by pursuing the idea that Ken had a financial conflict with that site that influenced his vote.
No, and again, I appreciate that detail. I'm looking at it more from a procedural standpoint, that that process is, has been put in place. And because there's a possible public perception that, again, that procedure was not followed through on, and that's, and after what the public has brought up, specifically John, I'm just saying, while being part of a town process myself, sitting on the DRB, we follow our procedures and our processes. And I'm just saying, is that something that was an oversight by the board, an oversight by Mr. Harrington, that he was required to follow that procedure?
I would say that it was an oversight on the part of the board. Again, in fairness to Ken, he was a very new member of the board.
Oh, yeah.
And he did join the garage committee because he, you know, had been opposed to the original project. And I would agree with Tim, that Ken, I think, was a very active member of our garage committee. We got the price down to, you know, a price that even Ken thought was a reasonable price. And I do know what Ken has said publicly is what he believes, is that, you know, there was a concern that the school tax was going to go up. But I do believe that, yes, it was an oversight. I would say that for sure. And with Ken being a new board member, it really, you know, would have been more the responsibility of the board chair and frankly, other veteran board members like myself, to maybe have pointed out when we say at every meeting, do you have a conflict of interest with anything on the agenda? That might have been a time for someone to think that, gee, Ken has abutting property, and he may... But again, I think it's worth boards being reminded by the community, because sometimes we get very involved in what we're doing, and there's just that assumption that everybody kind of knows the, you know, what the territory is.
Right.
And that's not always the case, so...
And that's more along the lines that I was driving, was that oversight. But thank you, and I appreciate it.
Just so you know. Just so you know, when that board policy was passed, I made the statement, and it's in the minutes, that there's probably nobody in this town would be more affected by that policy than me because I might want to be bidding on some town work.
Mm-hmm. Agreed.
And Karen knows I said that.
Yeah, he did, he did. Yep, yep.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Any other public comments? All right, thank you very much again for bringing that up. All right, Tim is our liaison to the school. And he, um, just wanted to update us on some of the school activities. Pardon?
An announcement, did we miss that?
Oh, I'm, yes, we did. I've, I've got, have borrowed glasses here and I'm sorry, I'm really not seeing very well. Yes, sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, I, I went to a workshop on IT security that was held by the Vermont League of Cities and Towns, uh, last week. And, uh, it was very well done. Uh, parts of it were actually quite entertaining. One of the gentlemen presented his threat analysis of, of IT systems as if he were a hacker and the things that, you know, he would be doing if he were trying to break into systems. But, uh, I have some background in that, that field, but I did learn some things from that, from that workshop. And Margie and I have talked about it and, uh, once we get through budget season, probably in January, we'll be sitting down together and looking at our, uh, IT security situation here in terms of policies and procedures and, uh, making sure we're up to date.
Great. Thank you. Any other announcements?
Is it time to bring this up, Karen, or no? The, uh,
We have that?
Article for next door?
Well, that is on the agenda.
That's coming up.
So if you could hold that, Ken, that would be great. Mitch, did you have any announcements?
No.
Okay. Anything else, Ken, other than?
Nope.
Okay. All right. Um, all right. So now, Tim, you're back on board with our school.
So yes, as school board liaison, I will report on the last school board meeting, which was last Wednesday. And I'm happy to say, as school board meetings, it was more exciting than most. I use that word reservedly because they're never, never that exciting, but some interesting issues, uh, came up. One, um, that's probably foremost on people's mind is, yes, in fact, it's very likely that school expenses are going to go up. Even before the school has finished its, its budget, there are, um, warnings coming from the state that there will likely be, uh, increased statewide expenses of, that was estimated to be around three and a half percent. Although those are not finalized, I don't believe yet. Board member David Durfee made an interesting point about the relationship between town taxes and school taxes. And in particular, um, the, the way school funding is done in Vermont, it's very complicated. And he pointed out that in the last couple of years, when the school budget actually went up, by the time all the distributed funding from one part of the state to the other was set and done, the amount of money that was required of the Shasbury taxpayers actually went down. So, all right, it was just another indication that, um, uh, you know, a report that state taxes are going to go up is, doesn't necessarily mean that, uh, the school budget is going to be, uh, going to go up. For one, the school budget hasn't been finalized yet. It's planned to be finalized, uh, in late January. But even if it did go up, uh, by the time all that shifting is done, there's still possibility that it, it might not end up being more, more money from Shasbury taxpayers. The other issue that's, uh, coming before the school board that's, uh, has a potential to stir up quite a bit of conflict is the District One issue. District One, uh, many people probably know are people in Shasbury, in the city limits of Shasbury, who are drawn into the North Bennington School District. And given that, uh, North Bennington has recently decided to go from a public to a private school, that's, that was a controversy all in itself, but also, uh, members of the school board in particular, Fran Kenny and Larry Johnson, don't like the idea of Shasbury taxes going to a private school and are looking into, uh, how and if District One could be dissolved and brought back into Shasbury. It's, uh, and the most significant thing, Larry Johnson is doing most of the research on this and he's uncovered, he's been digging through the historical records on how it came about. As one might expect, the historical record is not complete in that regard, but, uh, he has found out some interesting things, but as best we can tell, back in the day, which is late 1800s, District One was, uh, carved into the North Bennington School District, really, I think, out of convenience and almost a gentleman's agreement that those people in Southern Shasbury were closer to the North Bennington School and they could walk there and they ask Shasbury if you, you know, mind if these people walked to, to North Bennington School and it was agreed that that was okay. The, this has come up in a couple of school board meetings, the really, I think, significant news that Larry reported last time is that he's figured out what the procedure is for changing that. And the procedure for changing that ultimately is a vote by the legislature. And the legisla, there, it would all, it was also indicated that the legislature would likely, ask for some informational votes from citizens involved in the, uh, in, in the process. And that, uh, that would include, uh, Shasbury, uh, North Bennington. It wasn't clear if District One would be singled out for a, a vote in itself, but I personally would hope that would be the case because they're the people most directly affected by that. But also Bennington would be involved because students from Shasbury and, um, North Bennington feed into the, the Mount Anthony Union School system. So they would have a, a stake in it too, apparently, so.
So they would do pre-votes here locally to get like a status, you know, what do the townspeople think and then they would take it up to the Mount Hillier and
Yes.
Vote on it in there?
Correct.
But the concern is that we have public tax data dollars going to a private independent school. Is that the, is that the gist of the?
Yes.
Argument?
Yes.
So, Tim, did you have the sense of any sort of a timeline? Are they, or, or this is just slowly working?
Only notional at this point. I did ask that because, um, my, I, I did express some concern about the issue, mainly related to, it's, there's a lot of competing interests here. The, the Shasbury taxpayers as a whole are likely to benefit from bringing all of that, uh, taxable property back into, uh, Shasbury. North Bennington is likely to, uh, not benefit from that happening. And, um, then there's the District One people who are talking about their actual kids and which school they go to. And, um, I was expressing to Larry Johnson that that was where my primary concern was and that I was, uh, saying that I thought we might want to go slow on this process just to try and get a sense for what those people want, independent of a vote, but just in terms of how many of them actually come to, to Shasbury and ask to tuition in. Because the situation in District One now is that they have school choice. And they can, uh, this year, next year, uh, send their kids to Shasbury Elementary should, should, should they so choose. And this year, there were only two parents that, that tried to do that. So, uh, that suggested to me that maybe we weren't, we shouldn't be pushing to, to force this change on people that don't act like they want it. And Larry's told me that, uh, he couldn't imagine anything like this being decided by the legislature before the 2015 legislative session.
Okay. Well, thank you. Anything else from that meeting?
Do the, do the District One people pay tuition to go to the North Bennington or is it part, just part of the tax that they pay?
Their tax dollars go to the North Bennington Private School. One other thing just, uh, that did come up, which is kind of significant is there, uh, we all remember the strike from a few years ago and there's a, a push among the boards to, uh, do the salary and benefit negotiations with the teachers this year in, uh, open forum to keep, uh, from the kind of situation we had back during the strike where we had this he said, she said kind of situation that was all going on behind closed doors. And they are still waiting for word from the, the teachers' union on whether or not they will agree to that.
Good. Uh, one more point, clarification. Uh, the money, or the fact that they said it's going up by 3.5% and we don't, we'll, chances are we'll see a level fund or no increase at all, is because we have more students coming to Shasbury than the prior years? Is that one of the reasons? We get federal dollars for those or?
More students going to Shasbury does help the bottom line for a number of reasons. We get, uh, more, uh, state aid, uh, based on student population. Uh, we also have large, any, anything like that has large fixed costs. We have to heat that, heat and light that building and maintain that building. Whether there's 242 students as there are now or 300 students, which is closer to what absolute capacity is there. So, um, that's another way that, uh, we could, uh, collect those, the taxes from those, uh, additional students, but we wouldn't have to build a whole new building for those two students.
With the school hitting the law of District Ones, I mean, we're only, we're only
Yes.
58, so less, 242 to
Yeah, uh, the numbers I've heard is there are about 40 students in District One that could come to Shasbury were that, were that to happen? And, uh, uh, I've been told a couple of times that the, the maximum capacity of that school is around 300 and right now we're at about 242.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Tim?
Nope.
Okay, thank you, Tim, very much.
Thank you, Tim.
Constables. Bob is here. Bob Perry, welcome. Want to come up to the table with us? So we've gone over this, uh, you know, a few times, we're trying to get a little bit closer to what a, um, possible budget might be. We have a, you know, an interesting situation now, um, that's presented itself to us. And I think it was maybe, um, was it our own first constable who brought it to our attention?
And Mitch, yeah.
And Mitch, uh, working together. Right now, in the state of Vermont, a certified, uh, constable, if, if a constable has, is certified as a law enforcement officer, they have the ability to do law enforcement within their municipality.
Correct.
Right now, thi- this has never presented itself to Shasbury because we've never had a certified law enforcement officer who ran for constable. It has always, as long as I've been on the board and certainly with this current board, been the impression that, the constable duties were limited to the certain statutory powers that are listed that do not include, um, law, law enforcement, um, ability like, you know, putting on the blue light and going down the highway after someone, arresting someone on a DUI, those kinds of real law enforcement. Now, we had begun a discussion, because our constables right now are elected to one-year positions and Bob Perry and the previous first constable, um, had brought it to the board's attention that, not that we were not aware of some of the state legislation that requires constables that are involved in any law enforcement, um, duties to be fully certified. And the board had been hesitant to fund that because our constables were only elected for one-year positions and the feeling was that that's a major investment that we would be making in individuals that perhaps after a year would leave.
Sure.
So one of the thoughts that had come up was, uh, you know, maybe we should ask the community whether they would look at, uh, an appointment versus an elected position. And that that position could be appointed for perhaps up to three years. And if not that, even to at least extend the term of an elected constable. And I believe they can be elected up to two years, uh, by the people. Now, we're looking, as I understand it, um, we, we do have a certified law enforcement, um, constable right now. And we have Bob who, um, is very interested in getting the certification. Bob was a previous law enforcement officer years ago. So, again, the board has been discussing what might a budget be if we had two certified law enforcement officers. And right now, we have a budget of $200 for our constable position. We have sheriff services in town. We have been budgeting, I think this year, a little over $19,000. That afforded us, um, 20 hours a week of sheriff duties. We've had to up that. Actually, we're going to overexpend the budget because the grant that helped to subsidize that funding ran out, um, at the end of November, so. In order to fund fully the 20 hours in next week's, but, next year's budget, we'd be looking at over $25,000 for the sheriff's duties.
For how many hours, Karen?
That would be for 20 hours. Now, the town is going to have a number of decisions to make. And this board will have a number of decisions to make. And as I see it, uh, one is to really, uh, determine an, an accurate budget in the event that we had two fully certified law enforcement officers serving as constable. Now, whether those positions are appointed or elected, I think those two questions, it, those questions need to be put to the community. Another question that needs to be put to the community is whether they are elected or they're appointed, whether the community wishes for their constables to be granted law enforcement, um, powers. According to state statute, that, that is the decision of the community. So, right now
Clarification? It's a decision of this community to, to?
I, I was just going to, I think, just going to clarify that. The way the law stands now, a constable, if they had the budget right now, our fully certified constable could be engaged in full law enforcement, um, duties within the town of Shasbury right now. Unless the community votes to disallow that, um, ability.
Right.
Have I got it right?
Now, that's, yeah, I know, that agrees with what I just talked to the league about. But I, I want to add a footnote that I think that's an unintended consequence of legislation.
That, that may be, but that's what we have to deal with right now.
Well, no, but I still think that the select board needs to decide whether or not there's been enough discussion at the community level in support of constables assuming law enforcement authority.
But as elected officials, the select board really doesn't have any say unless we change it to, put it, put it to vote to have it appointed. And, I mean, unless we put it, put it to the town and says yes or no. I mean, they're the ones that are going to make that happen or not. I mean, they are going to say either we give them the authority if they're certified or not.
Well, and if we give them the authority, if the townspeople determine that they want to give them the authority to have law enforcement duties, we have to, we have to present a budget that allows
Then it's a clear directive, which would include a budget
That's right.
At some point.
And I thought we talked last time, that, I mean, you came in with the $25,000, that he said they'd do it for $15 an hour, which is $10 less that he said they'd do it for $15 an hour, which is $10 less. So that would leave like 10,000 out of the current sheriff's budget starting in July for some equipment. Granted, it might not be enough, we might have to do a little more. But, the last meeting, we discussed having a, instead of a sheriff or a constable line, maybe changing that line to enforcement line. And that way, that way, we, during the next six months, we can determine all these, we can answer them, all these questions in more detail. We've been working a lot on the garage and a lot of other things. We've talked about this around the edges. We have not discussed this in detail. And we have not put together a solid estimate for equipment and so forth.
Well, I think Paul presented a budget.
Before we get into...
I'm sorry, can I, I hate to interrupt, but before we get into the budget specifics, I want to make sure I understand the procedures of, of this. First, you said if, if the constable is a policeman, certified policeman, he can be a policeman right now?
Yep.
Yes, if he has the budget to do it.
If he has the budget, and then?
Unless he wants to do it for free.
Yeah.
But he could, he could. Now, our constable has indicated that he will not because he understands that, you know, frankly, that there is a misunderstanding over what, what duties he's allowed to perform.
So what the town of Shasbury can vote on is whether or not to stop that. They don't need to vote on whether or not it can happen. It already happens by virtue of current law.
He has the ability. Law allows him to perform law enforcement duties within the town of Shasbury, yes.
But it's a default. Let me just clarify. I think it's important to note that it's a, it's a, it's a consequence of the fact that it appears that Shasbury voters, all right, here, here are two facts. Shasbury voters have not yet expressly by vote authorized constables to perform law enforcement, to express their intent to have constables perform law enforcement activities. And they also haven't approved a budget that would support that. But they also have not ever to date prohibited by vote constables from practicing law enforcement activities. So therefore, because voters elected a fully certified law enforcement officer, whether they knew he was or not, because he was elected, he does apparently have law enforcement authority. Okay, so that, to me, all seems like this miraculous synchronicity of events. I, let me just continue on one thought here. I'm, I'm a big advocate of having open public discussions on big questions such as community policing. And so, I guess what I, I want to lay it on the table for consideration by the board, just in my professional capacity, that these votes have not taken on a sequential order of any sense. I mean, they just have not occurred. So there haven't been these public discussions. And so I, I think what, it's warrant some further discussion at the board level whether to, as Karen suggested, bring the question of appointment versus elected and versus term length to the voters in March. And then, part of that discussion also would entail, well, if they say yes in March to appoint it and to a term length that's longer than one year, does it make sense to budget for that eventuality in that, but in this budget year for fiscal 15 or postpone it to a few, for FY16 budget, once you had a clear directive? And so, did I make sense?
Kinda. I don't know.
Bob, please, go ahead.
I'm not sure 100% of the law, the way it reads right now, I'm not a lawyer. But when I first came on several years ago with Dave, we had the directive at that time that we could enforce the law within the state. We were allowed to get blue lights. Oh, yeah, Dave, Dave had them.
Not without law enforcement training, though.
No, no, that was prior to this. This is my statement, it was what I'm going to say. This law was just passed a year ago, or a year and a half ago now. Because it was July of 11, I believe it was, was when everything came to a screeching halt for us. Because that's when Dave called me and said, you know, we can no longer perform the duties that we were, you know, called to do for the town. Because the state has over usurped that and said that all the constables within the townships have to be full-time certified in order to do that. Prior to that, we had the ability to do that. Prior to that, I'm not sure if it was even brought up to a vote. It was just part of the bylaws for the towns.
Yeah, no, I, 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 I think that there were statutory powers that the constables had. And that was to enforce civil ordinances, you know, work on the dogs, lists. I mean, there were a number of things. Maybe it was to shoot a dog, you know, a dog that was vicious or whatever. I mean, there's a whole list of, in statute, but...
1936.
Right, right. But I don't think, you know, any, any motor vehicle pursuit, that was not...
Yes, they did. They had all, if they were constable, they had authority to do that if the towns funded them prior to this certification process.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Well...
That, that was my understanding, and that's how it was explained to me when I came onboard. And then it was about a year after that that I was on that things changed dramatically.
Exactly. Some towns have part-time certified constables that have police authority. That are not full-time certified, but are part-time.
So, I guess, I guess what it comes down to now, I know when Paul and I were here last time, you know, they talked about the budget, they talked about presenting it to the town, put it up for vote, didn't want to do it at the time because they didn't want to muddy the waters regarding the vote for the town garage and all this stuff. They didn't want people being confused about everything that was going to happen in that vote. And that's kind of the way it was agreed on. So, you know, it was our understanding, I guess, after this past vote that it was going to be put on the ballot for March, or at least talked about, to be put on the ballot for March, to see that, whether or not the townspeople want to, you know, bring this whole thing to fruition, or, you know, continue with the sheriff's department. And, and regarding the budget and everything, as I said, Paul dropped the budget off last time, which was, you know, it's not etched in stone, certainly enough. But I know everybody here wanted an idea of what they thought the costs were going to be. You know, you can get as fancy or, you know, expensive or not as expensive, depending on what the town's needs are, you know, to go ahead with this thing. It's, it's, it's not a real costly venture from what we see. Knowing what the expense is going to be for personal items, you know, uniforms, badges, things like that. The most expensive thing would be the vehicle and, you know, the, the, the gas and things to provide, you know, for that. So, where we're at right now, I guess, is what we were thinking is whether or not it's going to come up this, in this ballot in March, in, right, in '14, as to whether the town is going to approve, you know, two full-time certified, you know, constables in the town enforcing laws.
The way I look at it, it's got to be put up to the vote, you know, the, the people to vote on it. That's the way I would look at it. And then, how can you do anything to let, have their say?
You know, one, one of my concerns, I mean, I know that, that Paul, you had brought sort of a skeleton, I'll call it, of a budget.
Right, it was the last, put it together so you could see what we were...
Right, now, and I did have some questions about it. Because I, I wasn't quite sure, you had the sheriffs at $28,600. Now, my figuring at $25,500 for 20 hours, 52 weeks, is $26,520.
Okay.
And, and, and when I add it up, and I, you know, I may have gotten some of your numbers wrong, but I looked at the bulletproof vests, I think you said $1,400. You're talking about firearms, I think you said you had them, but it would be $150 estimate for holsters, a radio, mobile unit at $2,000, dispatch services, $1,200 a year, $4,500 for lights for, for a car, a computer, $179 one-time cost for something. But when I add all of that together, and that doesn't include the car, and frankly, it, it doesn't include, which I think any budget that we build has to include the tools that these folks would need. So, we're talking about guns, having to, to purchase them. And, and I understand that you have your own, but I think for the board, we need to look at this as a budget for a position, or positions, not, not for particular individuals. Because, you know, I mean, if it ends up elected position, it could change. It could change next March. But what I'm coming up with, just with those things, is, you know, a difference of about $1,500 between the sheriffs, and that does not include a car. And it doesn't include some of those other things that I mentioned. And, and, you know, I mean, I know we've gotten the budget from Pownell on their constable, their one constable, now I'm assuming he's full-time because his wages are $27,500. But the total expense for that department is over $41,000. So, you know, I just, I think it's really important as we go into this to understand, you know, that we could be looking at a, at an increase in the cost of law enforcement services. And I do believe strongly, as I think Ken mentioned, this, this needs to go to the voters. It is one of the reasons we waited, because I, if, I didn't have budget figures, and certainly the community didn't have them. And I don't, there just wasn't enough information to present it to the community in early December. But I do think that this is something that this board needs to, you know, really discuss. And if we are, if, if as a board, we're going to go out there and make any sort of recommendation to the community, we need to have a budget. And we need to know that it's a very, that it, that it's not a budget that, you know, we're putting out there because we happen to have constables who have all of this stuff.
If, if I may?
Yeah.
I put the budget that you already have in fact, for law enforcement, with the sheriff's department. So if my math was off, by $1,500. And what I showed you last time I was present, that Bob and I were here, the sheriff gets X amount of dollars an hour. And we could do the same for a reduced rate, $15 an hour. So the remainder of that, I believe, was $9,000, $10,000. That, that answers the question. That, that we're not coming to the board and saying, I find myself in a position because, again, I have to remind the board, it was an all or nothing for the sheriff. It was, that wasn't the constable. So this is an all or nothing. If you're going to allow us to have police powers, he says, I'm walking away. So if he does that, that budget is already there. You'll work on that budget for this March to take effect July 1.
No, but I guess what I'm suggesting is that, you know, what I've, when I added in those things that you sort of mentioned on the side, well, we need this and we would need that, this does not include a car. And any, and, and any of the expenses that go along with that, with that car. And so I just, I, I think, you know, so we would be over budget. We would be over the budget that we have prepared right now for the sheriff's department is. And how much we would be over in terms of purchasing a, a vehicle, I, I don't know. I don't know. I don't know how much that would be.
My question is, Karen, how can, without the town voting on whether they're appointed or elected, or, I mean, how can we go any further? Is my question. With the budget or anything else?
Well, I agree, I agree. But I do think that it's important for us, if we're putting a question to the, to the community, they need to have, they need to have the facts in order to make a proper, proper decision. And, and some of those facts, to my mind, if, if you're saying to them, okay, you know, you can either have a constable who does the traditional duties that are not required of a certified law enforcement officer, you can have those on this side, or you can have a certified law enforcement officer as a constable doing the full array. And this is what it, this is what it would cost if you went in that direction.
Right.
So that's why I'm saying as a board, we need, we need to make that determination and either say, okay, as a board, we are not recommending one route or the other route. You know, we may say, we're going to recommend to the community that we not have constables who are performing law enforcement in this town of Shasbury. We're going to continue, we're going to recommend that we continue with the sheriff's services, and here's the budget for it. Or we can say, you know, we're asking you to vote, this is what we would recommend, and we've built a budget based on that.
Paul, what is the constable up in Dambie, is that his car or does the town own that?
That is, that's Nelson Tithkin, that's his car. That allows him to be appointed from one community to another.
Yeah, because he works in one, one town up there.
He does, no.
You can do that, you can do that.
I mean, that guy's a goldmine. Not that I want to set up speed traps, but, I mean, he, he makes, I don't know how much. I mean, I had one of the selectmen up there tell me one time, he says he, he makes them a lot of money.
Oh, you know, honestly, that, now that's a whole different discussion. I mean, when we first got the sheriffs in here, the intent was not for it to be a moneymaker.
No, 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 I'm not saying that.
Said it right from the get-go. The intent was to have a safe, safer community and, you know, and we made that very clear to the sheriffs. We were not looking for a revenue stream, we were looking for a safe community.
We're not Georgia, yeah.
Yeah, I, we're, I need to be convinced why we want to do this. From my point of view, the sheriff provides a great product at a great price. No muss, no fuss, we want him, we call him up, he does what we want, $25 for an hour's worth, and we're done. We don't have dispatch and court and all those things to be, to dealt with. What I need to hear is, what's the upside of doing, of going the, the constable community policing route? And I think the, the community needs to hear this too. Because I think when we go through these numbers, it's almost certain that we're going to be talking about larger numbers. I mean, from, if we set aside, as Karen suggested we should, and I think we should, set aside what Paul has offered very generously to do in terms of essentially working below cost for the first year and bringing his own guns and all that. If we look at this long-term, what is the cost? And I, the best numbers we have right now, I think, is what Pownell has, which is $41,000 for a, a one full-time person. That's more than we're paying right now for sheriff. And given the sheriff's position that it's, you know, it's either him or constable policing, whether or not we like that or not, that's the situation. So I would love to hear from you guys why we should consider going this route.
I'll start? Okay.
First constable.
You go first.
I think just, several, we answered one question. So let me, let me start off by saying that, right now, my understanding to this was the board, we approached the lieutenant of the Shasbury State Police, who thought it was a great idea because it'd be more people in Shasbury.
It was a great idea when we could have you and the sheriff.
I understand that, I agree with you there. The other thought process was that you have people in town. It's a little different than having four or five people in a car, running radar, and really don't know anybody. Now, when I use the term know somebody... Now, when I use the term "know somebody," it's, I know what Ken drives, I know where Ken lives, I know that you have a daughter in school. I don't see the sheriff's department in the schools. They do in Arlington, but they don't here. I mean, we can either keep the sheriff's department and just have them run radar, or have constables assisting the state police. Now, the state police aren't going to go away. So, I think someone had mentioned to me, well, what happens if the sheriff leaves Shaftesbury? I said, the state police are going to be here. I mean, it, the idea, I think, from my point of view, with thirty years of law enforcement, is that we're not going to run radar and radar traps. We're going to get into the schools and assist the bus drivers when they have problems with people passing them. We're local people, we, we know. If something happens here in Shaftesbury, we live here. We respond from our home in Shaftesbury, not from our home in Manchester, or not from our home in Rupert, or throughout the county. I understood what the sheriff said. He says, you can't get any more local than that. I disagree with him. You can't get any more local than having two constables who are responsible for the town of Shaftesbury. We live here. Now, I understand there are some issues as to, how does that make it better for us as Shaftesbury residents? You know, we go to the ballgames, the kids are going to get to see us, the panels are going to meet us. We're going to have an idea of what's going on in town, because people talk to us. I talk to everybody on the board when I see them, and we talk about all sorts of other things, whether it's our girls in the school, or, you know, dogs running at large, but that's what you get. You get this, that's the whole idea behind the constable. Someone was elected back in England, and you're the guy that's going to take care of the problems. And you're going to take care of the problems in this community. That, I think, is more positive, because I don't see the sheriffs in the schools. I know the troopers are busy enough as it is, and they do their best they can. But we can simply support the deputies when they have things that may take them time to respond to Shaftesbury. If, the other day, I think they had three cars over on the Woodford side with the car accidents. If something came in here in Shaftesbury, Barbara and I could handle that situation. So, it's, I think it's positive. Now, I'm all for having the sheriff's department and the state police and the constables working in unison. But if, if there's an entity out there that decides all or nothing, I can't control that. But I think by having the constables here, you're getting local people dealing with the folks who live here in Shaftesbury, to identify problems and work with them.
Just a clarification, too, on the forty-one thousand dollars for Pownell. That's a full-time officer with benefits, with, you know, all the bells and whistles that go on, that's in that budget. We're talking about two-part, ten hours a week each, you know, doing the twenty hours that the sheriff is doing, not full-time. I don't know how we'd pay you, if you get paid with a ten ninety-nine, or whether you'd be on a payroll or not. Depends, I guess, if you're elected or appointed. I'm not sure how that would be. That's, that's details we'd have to work out.
Well, you know, I did hear, one of the things that I want to make it clear is that the sheriff does work on a four-hour block. And I understand it. If you called him and asked him to do something differently, he would probably do that. But, you know, my intent, in a way, is during the school hours, is to have the constable there assisting the crosswalk, or maybe directing traffic at the end of the day to get that traffic on Buck Hill out of there. I mean, that's one of the things that we could do. So, you know, if Bob has the car that day, it's his four hours, he could work that four-hour block any way he wanted to. If he wanted to come down in the morning, and then in the afternoon, or spend an hour at the school, it's four hours that we can give on a given day. It isn't blocked. We can use it any way we want, as long as you're comfortable with the service we're providing for the four hours a day.
Now, why, why is that something that, that you couldn't do if, that wouldn't even entail law enforcement activity? Well, no, but, but wait a minute, Paul, because when you're talking about going into the schools, and, and meeting with the children, and crossing them, you know, being present at the crossing guard, that's, I, I don't see that as law enforcement. Frankly, I wouldn't see that as a, as an issue that Chad would have, and Chad didn't, the sheriff, did make a point of saying he had no problem working with any, they do with constables that don't have law enforcement capability. My understanding from Chad, and I can understand it, frankly, is that, that it creates confusion in terms of, you know, if you have, if you're working with the sheriff's department and you have law enforcement-capable constables, it's kind of like who's on first. You know, who gets the call, who responds?
Well, I could answer that. I can answer that for you right now. If you have, the constables are on, they sign on, they would know if you will use Bennington PD for this conversation. When that constable is on the calls from Shaftesbury, go into Bennington PD. Bennington will notify the constable. You sign in. Hey, I'm on duty, I'm out in Shaftesbury for the next four hours. That's how that works. The statutes here are clear, is that what happens and who. If I happen to be the full-time certified police officer, and there's a sheriff out here, then by statute, jurisdiction falls under me. Now, I don't play that way. We all have things to do, bad accidents, we're, here's priority. Keep the scene safe, take care of the injured, get them to the hospital, and do up an accident report, conduct an investigation, do up the accident report. I don't agree, I am a full-time officer, and I have, I don't understand how this confusion with the sheriff comes into play, because we work well with anybody who's there to help us. So, I don't know what Chad's talking about, I really don't. I've been doing this for a very long time. And so, there is a spirit of cooperation amongst the agencies, and that's how that works. So, as long as you have a constable on call, on call or on duty, then the dispatcher knows who's on first, and then sends them appropriately.
Karen? Oh, I'm sorry. Jay, Jay Palmer.
You said Bob has a constable, does the sheriff also patrol in Pownell? Or did he say you go to then also?
I, I'm not, I don't know. I, I, Mitch, did you?
I guess, is, why is he saying no velocity? If he does patrol in Pownell, where are they at, constable?
I'm, I'm guessing not. I know that there was an issue years ago, and I know, I think that one of the ways it was resolved was that the current or the then constable, and you guys might even know this better than me, but he actually, he ended up joining the sheriff's department, and was, his only assignment was Pownell. That was the way they had handled it. Now, I'm not quite sure, that was a number of years ago. I'm not sure how it is done at this point, but I don't, you know, I would imagine that that's probably...
Where we could find out with a phone call?
Well, sure, we could find out with a phone call. Yeah, yeah. I mean, you know, I, I'm really, I have to say, my preference would be to continue with the sheriff's department. And I'm saying that, certainly budgetary reasons, I understand what you're saying, Paul, in terms of local. I will say that we have had sheriffs, in fact, you know, one of them, and I think he's up in Manchester now, he was a neighbor of mine, and he was a Bennington sheriff for, you know, at least two or three years, and he lived right down the road from me. So, you know, I think one of the points that Chad had made when he was here was that we do have, they are local.
Well, that gentleman that you're talking about is not local. I mean, he lives here in town, yes. He drove the transport van. He drove prisoners back and forth from the court to the jail. And yes, we have hired him, or the town of Manchester has hired him as a full-time police officer.
Okay, but, but, you know, I don't think he's the only one, and, and...
Well, Karen, I can't...
But, but let me, let me just finish. I also want to reiterate the fact that we have, until this discussion began, we, the town has been very pleased with the sheriff's services. If we wanted to contract for more hours, we could. If we wanted to ask the sheriffs to go into the schools, granted, they may not have a child in the school, some of them might, you know, they will do what we ask them to do.
I understand that. But I'm saying that all they do right now is write speeding tickets. That's all they do.
Well, maybe we need, maybe we need, maybe we need to identify other things. Right now, you know, one of the major issues we've had in town, in terms of what the public brings to us, is speeding, and we've had a rash of break-ins last year.
Who investigates the break-ins?
The state police investigate the break-ins.
Okay, so the state police investigates the burglaries, and you still only have the sheriff's department running radar? I mean, I'm saying...
Well, no, no, but, but my point is, I mean, the, the, you know, what you hope for, and I think you've expressed this, is a presence. And, you know, you may talk about the sheriff's running radar, but they're driving through town. They're driving all throughout town. And, and, you know, when we had break-ins, we actually engaged them for additional hours during a critical time, and it was last year, this time last year, right before the holidays. And they were driving all around town, and, you know, looking at different areas. I, I, like Tim, I think, would really need to be sold. There would need to be something that, that we haven't been getting, or that we had had an issue with the services, and perhaps couldn't get more, to put us in a position of going down a road with, you know, in my own mind, frankly, I look at it as a police department. I look at Margie as maybe the police chief. There's administrative work, you know, we're talking about then contracting dispatch services, and, and a car, I mean, there's all kinds of things that frankly, in this little town, you know, we can barely get, you know, enough money in the budget to get a few extra hours a week, so that the administrative assistant is, is not working until eleven o'clock every night. And I just see this as one more thing on the plate to frankly administer. I do worry about liability for the town, for you guys.
Is there not a liability factor with the sheriff's department? Are we, you know, we can't say that we are in the business. You have contracted with them. If something goes wrong that they create, I do believe we are somewhat in that liability chain.
You looked into the law enforcement coverage?
We have, we have law enforcement coverage, you know, there's a limit, I, it's a regular limit, you know, up to two million dollars or something like that.
I guess all I'm asking, Karen, is to look at what the sheriff has provided. Now, I know, I don't, I don't hear, I'm not going to tell you something that I don't know. And there are some people that want to know what the sheriff's department does. And I can only use the town of Woodford as an example, and then it all came back as, you know, we're not in to make any money. But I wasn't happy with what I heard and what I saw, and what I read. And so, you know, I'm, I'm saying to you as a board, that there are several communities in this county of Bennington that does not have the sheriff's department. Now, I don't, I don't think it's fair when somebody says, well, you can go to the sheriff's department, pay fifty-five dollars an hour. I mean, I would think that's a community's prerogative, if that's what they want to do.
I'm sorry, I, I didn't follow that. Could you say that?
The comment that Chad had made was that, well, you can hire the sheriff, I mean, the state police at fifty-five dollars an hour.
Right, that's what apparently they're going rate is. That's what Dorset has.
Right, that's the, that's the state police.
Right.
But I didn't hear Chad said, I could do better for less. He was a businessman.
Can I just interrupt?
Sure.
I think we need to back off this constable versus Chad Schmidt sheriff theme in the discussion. It's beginning to sound too close to me.
Well, and I agree. I'm with you, I'll stop.
I think the bigger issue is Shaftesbury and community policing, and how best to structure that.
Well, and that's what I'm trying to present.
Yeah, that's right. And I think that's always been the intent, to stay focused on that.
Well, who ultimately is going to make this decision as to whether it's a judgment of the board to move this, or is it the town? What does the law say regarding that? Because we're talking in circles, and even despite how you feel, Karen, and I respect the way you feel, just like you should respect the way I feel, or Paul feels regarding that. But if it's a law that the town has to be the ones to decide that, it doesn't matter what we say here in this panel tonight, it should be brought to the board, or, excuse me, brought to the people, and let them decide as to, I'm sure they've watched these programs time and time with, with the debates on the constables. So, I think they probably have a good idea of what it's about. But I guess I don't understand, and that's what I would like to know tonight, is who ultimately is going to make that decision? Is it you guys as a board, you have the power to do that, or you don't have the power, we need to bring this to the people and let them decide?
It has, I believe it has to be brought to a vote of Shaftesbury residents.
I do too, Karen, but the other thing that I think Mitch said, or maybe you did, that Pownell's budget for the police, or for the constable down there, is forty-something thousand dollars. Well, if you double Chad Smith's rate, put it to forty hours, you've got about the same money.
Yeah. So, I guess since we're kind of beating a dead horse here, I mean, if, I guess, are we going to decide tonight whether we're going to have a ballot, an article about constable and policing on the March ballot?
What's the pleasure of the board? Do I have a motion?
I guess that'll, that'll end the discussion, I mean, one way or another, if we get the town to vote on it.
Well, what is, does anyone know what the law says? Does it go to the people, or does it...
I think to answer Bob's question, if I understand that, and I'm...
To make it clear, I think that's the best practice.
Yes, we, we need to.
Then it doesn't matter what we say as a, all of us here as a board tonight.
Well, right now, by default, he has policing authority, he doesn't have a budget. The only thing that the town can vote on is to remove the policing authority from the constable, and they have to do that in a vote.
Okay. Fair enough.
So...
It's not the case that, to address Bob's question, the board decides what goes on the ballot.
Right.
The citizens, independent of the board, have the ability to petition for a ballot article.
Okay.
So, if we say, no, we're not even going to put it on the ballot, the citizens still, by petition, can have it put on the ballot.
Okay. Gotcha.
I still believe we owe it to the constables, and we owe it to the community, to put this on the ballot, knowing, again, the fact that you have law enforcement authority, you could be performing that right now in Shaftesbury, if you had the budget to do it with. And I think that we need to ask the townspeople if that's what they want.
Or not, I guess, and then that...
Well, or not, is if they vote no. And, and the other big piece of this that we had discussed, and I think, I'm trying to remember, Paul, when we first talked last year, if you were in favor of it, was whether we would recommend appointment or election.
Right.
And the term of office. So, that's why I started this whole thing out by saying, I think we're looking at three different things.
Right.
Well, how would you do that then, Karen?
Well, you know, I think we, we would need to get some, some legal help with wording.
Yeah.
But again, I think the community should be asked whether they want an appointed constable, if they want, I don't know that even statute requires two constables. So, you know, are we looking...
Well, no, but, I mean, to me, if you have anything less than three years, and you're going to have them working for the town, it's insane.
I think elected can only be up to two.
Two is likely.
Elected, elected can only be...
Then I think they should be appointed for three years.
So, I guess, I guess a motion, I'll try to make a motion here.
Okay.
But can I, can I just, just one last thought? Because if they are appointed, if a constable is appointed, and they have been given by the town, or they actually, if the town does not take away their law enforcement ability within the municipality, then even though they're appointed, they can do whatever they want within, you know, that, that statute language. So, it's important to understand, it's, you know, that the select board is not going to be able to control...
The difference between elected and appointed, though, is the select board, if they're appointed, has more control.
Well, more...
What with the constables, we can remove them, they serve at the pleasure of the select board.
That's right. But in terms of their actual duties...
That's what I'm, that's exactly where I like to go.
In terms of their actual duties, how... In terms of their actual duties, how, how is that-
How can you limit?
How can you limit?
Okay. Well, I think we've got to know that before you go any further.
Let me see if I can find that statute.
The-
That's exactly what I was going to ask, trying to figure out, because how do you carve out a subset of law enforcement duties to perform?
Right.
Versus the whole array of-
Well, that 1936A, which we've been talking about for several months now.
Which is right here.
It does talk about the full-time certified, I meet that requirement.
Right.
So as a full-time certified constable, I can arrest, search and seizure within the confines of Shafsbury.
Right, and, right. What else is there?
Well, I have full law enforcement powers.
That's right.
Whatever the law enforcement officer does in the state of Vermont, whether you be a constable or a trooper or sheriff, you all have the-
So therefore, there's really no way the board could limit-
The statute also, I think, there's one other.
If, if you were to be appointed?
Appointed, I would be, I would still have the full responsibility of a law enforcement-
But you're still, you're appointed, so you're technically an employee, right?
Yes, yes.
No, I'm a part-time employee because it's part-time work, because it's-
Yeah, but you'd be, your status would be-
I would still, but I, I think-
It's no different working for Manchester Police.
I'm responsible to the people who put me in there.
Right. But I mean, your police chief tells you what your duties are.
I serve him as he serves the town, I serve the people of Shafsbury.
Right, so regardless, you've got full duties, you're still-
So that's, so that was part of what I was trying to get at earlier, Margie would be his supervisor.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's by statute. The police chief, if there is an article, I have another statute that talks about-
You've got to give her a hat.
Town managers are responsible in hiring and firing.
Yeah, and Shafsbury doesn't have a town manager.
No, but you're-
But anyway.
Town administrator would probably have that hat.
They may need to go back and take a look at what they have.
You look good in a hat, anyway.
But, no, but I think the important issue is, is really the ability to so-called control the activities of, and that's, that's sort of a, I think that was a misunderstanding on our part so far, misinterpretation.
But don't you-
That, that by appointing, switching to an appointed constable versus elected, that somehow the town could direct law enforcement capabilities. Now, obviously, behavior and, and conduct within the confines of a job description are within the purview of the select board and its administrator.
Absolutely.
So, and, you know, as I know statewide, all over.
But I think we would be bound-
Conduct of police officers can be controversial sometimes, but not, not always. So.
Yeah, but don't you have more control if they're appointed than if they're elected?
Well, not, yes, because you have that personnel aspect of the relationship, I think.
When they're elected, they're on their own.
That's right, that's right. The only other thing that I wanted to address, just very briefly, because, was when we, now, I said, let's try to keep to the big picture, but I am going to go back to a remark of the sheriff. When we get back to the issue of, oh, TERF or how do you respond or how do you divvy up response to an incident? In my mind, it seems to me that the incident command system kicks in to general response to, let's say, a larger incident of some kind.
I'm not-
If it were strictly a, strictly a law enforcement response that's called for, though, I'm not sure how the incident command setup works between different agencies.
Well, I-
Companion agencies, let's call them.
That, I think, would be wrapped up in a nutshell, you know, major incidents, homicides, things of, state police would have that responsibility.
Okay.
My intent is not to come in here and say to the state police, ah, they have the resources, the manpower, they have it all. But what we would do is to support them in any way we could. So if there was an issue whether they needed a trooper, I'll use this as, as easily as, I need a person to do entry control, Bob and I could do the entry control, but ties up one of their investigators to do something else for the crime, for the, for the crime scene. And so your day-to-day operation, if you will, car accidents, Bob and I could do that, that wouldn't be an issue. Directing traffic, we could do that, that wouldn't be an issue. You know, it's, I am not saying to this board that I will not work with anyone, that's not where I'm going with this. I will work, we will work with everybody because it is, it is the safety of the community which is the utmost responsibility, not a TERF. We're not going to play that game.
Yeah, yeah. That's helpful. And if it, but if it were a larger, let's just say the first response happens to be the sheriff to a crime scene, then the VSP would be called in and assume control.
We would always, I think we'd have that, I think that's just a-
That by virtue of the fact that they're first on scene doesn't drive an incident command system at all.
I mean, if it's a car accident, and this is where I use this car accident, if there's a car accident, and I hear it quite often when I'm working in Manchester, it'd be a car accident and VSP will ask one of the deputies if he's available to handle it because they may not be down in Woodford or Pownell, they can't get up here for that. There is a working relationship here, I-
Yeah, yeah.
This is not an issue as to, but we do have a very good working relationship. This, this entire process, why we're here today, was brought because we wanted more, more eyes in Shafsbury.
Right.
A better working, that's, that's what this was all about. And, and that, I maintain, that's the way it should be.
Margie, do you think that VLCT folks could help us with some language, ballot language?
Possibly, though their senior attorney is no longer there.
That's right.
Yeah.
I just looked up in-
Probably, we, yes, as a start.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm. I don't think it's that intricate. I think it's just a sequence of questions that you would ask.
Right.
It's, it's, for instance, you have to first vote to set up a reserve fund before you actually fund it. So to me, you'd have to determine the direction we're going in before we can fund it. And then the question is whether that means trying to encourage the voters to move to an appointed constable. I think that extending the term is a no-brainer. I mean, I think if, if you were for having more community, community policing.
Well, I'm going to ask the board, there, there are grants that we can apply for, I'm not saying that's an absolute, but there are things that we can do that might be able to offset this. In, in March, we vote for a budget. I believe a budget is already there with little to no money increase. I mean, it, and as I said the last time we met at the budget, talking about a constable's budget, it's there. If, come July 1st, if we lose the police services that we have, what are we going to do? What do we do? Because we can say, you have a full-time certified constable that can give you 20 hours, we can send Bob to training at no expense to the town. It's not going to cost us to send him to the 48-hour training.
Why, why would it not cost us?
I called the police academy and that's something that they do. So the only thing that you could, to maybe make it worth his while is pay him his mileage or however you want to work it. So it's not this god-awful expense to train Bob. He, in the, in the months that I've known Bob, it's, it's, I can't understand why he comes every week. And quite frankly, this is something that he wants to do, he's a resident of the town, I think you couldn't ask for anything more than what we're trying to provide to the town.
Well, that, you know, that piece of information, Paul, would be very, very helpful to know and to why, the rationale for that.
For the training?
Yeah.
It's the Vermont Police Academy, by statute, they're required to train police officers in the state of Vermont.
And because you were a former police officer, he, he could be-
Well, he's a part-time certified. He, we could take-
Oh, you're a part-time certified, Bob?
Bob Perry to walk into the door and I could present Bob Perry to the board and say, Bob is interested in being a constable if you wanted to appoint him, this is what he's going to need for training. I could make a phone call and say, I need training.
So you, you are part-time certified, Bob?
Not, not at this time, right?
Well, I'm not sure what that entails as far as the certification is concerned.
Well, it'd be 48 hours that you would have to attend up-
Part-time or full-time?
Part-time. You would have to be part-time certified, you're going to need 40 hours.
Well, I'm not, yeah, so no, I'm not part-time certified.
And then he's going to need so many hours of field training.
Yeah, I, I looked up the whole curriculum and I've got that information and costs, but I just haven't had a whole lot of time yet to go into detail, just from my own education. So I was just trying to-
So I go back, I'm going to, my question to the board is what happens if, come July 1st, we don't have a contract?
Why wouldn't, why wouldn't we have a contract?
Well, no, I'm asking you, that, that was my understanding. I mean, I'm trying not to go back to the, to the topic, but if, come July 1, if, if you change the constable, but the constables are the same, in other words, if we don't get a, and I am on the ballot, but we go up for election, I have police powers. So I'm, I'm going to ask, if I have police powers and you ask me to start answering some of the calls, what happens if you don't have a contract come July 1?
I, I, sorry, I'm not, I'm not quite following that.
Not sure why we, that would happen.
I'm not quite following.
We've got to go back to the all-or-nothing comment. That, that's, that's, we can go back and look this, that comment up.
Come July 1, we renew our contract with the sheriff, why wouldn't?
Well, if he walks away from the contract.
Why would he do that?
Because he said he would.
If-
That's what he said he would, if you give the-
Assuming, assuming a positive vote in March, is what you're saying?
Well, let's say you don't have, let's say we don't get it on, let's just say-
He doesn't need one, he's full-time.
We're re-elected as constable.
Right.
By statute, I have law enforcement powers, just by statute.
Yeah.
So-
That's no different than right this very second. And you're not assuming law enforcement authority right now.
You have that now.
Right.
I have that right now.
I know, but you're not, you're not, you're choosing not to take on-
Well, because I was asking the board what direction you would have liked to have seen.
Well, again, my, my, my direction will be taken from the community. And that's one of the reasons I believe very firmly, and I, I'm guessing that the rest of the board does too, and I would like to have a consensus at least on that, that we, I would like to ask the community whether they want their constables to have law enforcement capability. If they want their constables to, to be serving as law enforcement officers.
I would suggest-
Because I think that that, if we have a community that says yes, then, you know, we may be in the position that you just described, which is that, okay, they want their constables to be the law enforcement in, in Shafsbury, and that means that the budget that we had set aside for the sheriff's department would go to the constables. That's, to my mind, we take it from the community.
Here's an article that was voted on, will the town vote to fill the office of constable by appointment of the select board rather than by election in accordance with state statute Title 17 VSA 2651A?
Good.
And the vote passed-
That's very concise.
On the particular one passed. So that would be one article.
Did that appointment, okay, and then didn't, didn't refer to term, yes?
That one would be, do the town vote to prohibit constables from exercising any law enforcement authority based on Title 24, Chapter 55, Section 1936A?
Okay.
That would be another article.
Yep.
And what was the third one? Oh, does the town agree to increase the appointment to three years? If, if the first article passes, do we agree to a three-year term? If it doesn't pass, do we agree to a two-year election?
Mm-hmm.
Karen, to answer your question, as far as the consensus, I'm not sure I go along for the reason that, to me, it seems like we go to the voters to ask permission for things, to get to ask permission for things that the board has decided are in the best interest of the town. This board, I don't believe, has decided this question yet. And to me, it leaves open a chance for a lot of confusion to, for this town to go and say, we don't know, we as a board haven't decided this yet, but we'd like you to decide. I think, uh-
Well, I know, I'm not suggesting-
Work this out, I think, and there's, and we're missing a board member and it's a, it's a, it's a big issue. It is, as you said, creating a police department. And I think this board needs to decide that before it goes on the ballot.
I disagree it's creating a police department. That would be up to the select board, if we appointed them, to be, okay, now you are now a police department, we're going to have a police department, we have constables. You, you didn't grow up in Vermont, I grew up in Vermont, small towns up here, they all have constables. And they have been doing law enforcement since I was knee-high to a grasshopper.
And you're going to tell me that, that that's not going to create any extra work on the town administrator? Managing two, two policemen? To me, that's creating a police department. We can get into a debate later on about how big a commitment that's going to be, but I think we would all agree it's going to be greater than zero. And I don't think there's any more blood to squeeze out of that turnip there at the end of the table. So we're going to have to, so there's an additional expense in dealing with that administration.
Well, we're also-
But that's, that's not what I wanted to talk about. You were asking for consensus on that this should go to the voters and saying this board needs to decide this issue before it goes to the voters.
I, I, I agree. Well, yes, I agree, we need to decide it before it goes to the voters. What I'm asking for is a consensus as to whether it, whether a question should go to the voters. Now, I also said earlier that I believe that this board should make a recommendation. Maybe we won't be able to. I don't know if we'll have a split board or not. Come January 7th, we're going to have a full board for about a week. And I would see us frankly needing a full board. You know, our, our absent board member Carl had been, you know, involved in some of these discussions. I think it's a really important discussion. I do believe it, it needs to go before the voters. I've certainly heard a lot of talk out there about this issue. There's a lot of people that are very interested in, in whatever direction this might take. But, you know, what I'm, I guess what I'm asking is, before we start spinning wheels with getting language together, does the board believe that these questions should be put to the voters? Whether, you know, whether the select board is coming down on one side or the other, I, I, I do believe that this community does not understand that right now, they have at least one constable who, if he had a budget or if he was, you know, willing, not so much willing, but, you know, didn't care so much what the town, the municipal government was saying to him, he could go out and do law enforcement right now in the community. I don't know that the community is aware of that. And I think that they, they need to have the ability to make that decision, whether they want that happening or not.
I agree that ultimately this decision should be put to the voters. I still contend that this board needs to decide that we want to take an action, then we ask the board, the voters for permission to take that action. I don't believe we should put an article on the ballot and ask the voters to tell us what to do.
I agree.
Do we agree we should appoint versus elect to give us more control if, if, if it goes forward? I mean, right now, they're elected, he can, he could run wild if he wanted to. That's what I, you know, that's, that, I mean, that right there prompts, makes you want to put something on the article, put an article on the ballot to ask whether or not you want your constables to have police authority.
Right.
And once you get that, I mean, once that, 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 your cognitive uncertainty just zig, just went to nothing. Now we know where we're going.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, yeah.
So, I mean, that, I think is like even elected and appointed. You know, I mean, I think, I think, I think appointed is, makes sense for a three-year term. It adds stability and adds-
Control.
Yeah, control from the select board. But that- But that won't change the fact that he's still not a, you know, full-time law enforcement officer, and he can do anything he wants. But we, after, once we decide that, then we have to say, does the town want a constable to have law enforcement activity, which is?
I guess before I could say, I haven't decided that question yet. Why is it the way it is now, for example? Why do we elect a constable by default as opposed to appointing?
It's a statute.
It's been that way since.
State law. That's the way it is.
Well, you can change it to be appointed by a vote by the community. That's in the 1936.
Now, would you also, I do support the appointing over the electing. But I also know based on, you know, some of the reading that we've been doing, again, that, you know, and this is nothing, you know, because I love Bob, but, you know, there is something that you're not required to have two constables.
Correct.
And is that, is there any reason to put that question to the voters? I mean, we've always had, you know, first constable, second constable. Is there?
The constable section on the ballot.
Right, pardon?
So we could have a constable section on the ballot.
We're going to have a whole page of constables.
First and second, appointed or elected, two years if elected, three years appointed, and do you want them to have police authority? I mean, that, right there, that answers all the questions we have.
Mm-hmm.
Does the statute say limit their police authority?
What do you mean?
Under that 1930.
Yeah, it says, a town may vote.
To.
To prohibit constables from exercising any law enforcement authority.
Oh, they're statutory.
Or.
Right.
To prohibit constables from exercising any law enforcement authority without having successfully completed a course of training.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that, I read it and I said.
Yeah. All right. Mitch, do you want to take on trying to draft some potential warning language?
Sure, I'll, I just pulled one up from Wakefield.
Right, I think, you know, some of that.
Pull up a couple more, I'm sure.
Yeah.
And I'll search for other, see if they've had articles where they're limiting authority or not. I mean, that was just for elected and appointed.
Right.
And I thought it was more detailed than it. That was before the certified training came in, became necessary.
Yes.
And what is said, that as an elected official, elected constable, didn't matter whether they had certified, they were certified or not, they were the constable. If they were appointed and didn't have a certified, then they couldn't be a law enforcement officer. That's kind of what the stuff around that article was about.
Right, okay.
But that was before the change in law.
Mm-hmm.
Where everyone has to be certified now.
Why don't we let Mitch work them up and then?
Yeah, I think that's, I think that would be.
When we get to the next meeting, then we'll have a better idea what we want to do.
Well, no, Carl won't be here till January 7th.
That's our next meeting, oh, our next regular meeting.
Well, yeah, but we'd be a lot closer to have it pretty well straightened out.
Why did you say we would only have a full board for a week?
Because then we're losing another board member for, I think, another 10 days or so. And that's the period of time when, you know, we, that's the reason we're shooting for January 7th, to warn the budget, because we'll have a full board.
Okay.
And, you know, if we're warning that night, it would, you know, now the language, we would not have to have this particular language ready, I don't know what the date is, but it's closer towards the end of January.
January 23rd is the last day to have petitioned article language.
Okay. But I think it would be important for us to, I would like to see us as a board be able to vote on the direction going forward if we, you know, if we have the language and we're comfortable with it, I think that would be, I think that would be great if we could do it that night. Anything else?
Nope.
Anything else, guys?
Do you want a full budget proposal put together?
I.
I know that we have some holes in what we.
We definitely have holes.
Yes, yes.
Love and I can work it up and you can at least see what it is.
I think that would be helpful, because that really was my confusion. When I added all the add-ins that we talked about afterwards, we were actually.
So what is the date that you want that by?
As soon as you can get it.
Soon as we can get it?
Yeah, because we're working through the budget now. In fact, we'll talk about maybe a meeting this Thursday.
But you won't need us on Thursday?
No, 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 no. But if you can, if you can present it to Margie, she can get it out to us, that'd be great. That'd be great.
We'll take care of it.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, guys.
And thank you for your patience. And this is a tough issue. It's a big one. It's a big one for the town. I'm very sorry, Jay. Yes.
Who the miracles of the internet, yes, the sheriff's department does patrol.
Okay, thank you, miracles of the internet.
Sheriff, oh, they do patrol.
They do, so I'll ask that question.
I didn't either.
So they have a sheriff budget and a constable budget?
I don't know. Well, that was their law enforcement sheet, right?
Well, that's the sheriff's doing it for free.
That's interesting, because I didn't see it on there. We'll still call. I think we should still, Mitch, I think we should still make a call down there.
I can call. I called her before, she was very helpful.
Yeah, okay, good. Okay, where are we? Let's see.
Storage of highway equipment and materials.
Storage of highway, yeah. Is this something that I should know something about?
Can I give you a very, I have to give you a very brief report that Peter Cross, he's agreed to allow the town to store materials and equipment on the adjacent property to the town garage. We used to do that in the past. It was done, I don't know if there ever really was a lease, Peter's Cross says there really wasn't.
We did have.
But the treasurer required an invoice, a monthly invoice. It was $200 a month. And he seems to feel that nothing is needed except a loose agreement or, you know, maybe if you had to put something in writing, it would be just a very, a couple of simple lines.
Simple.
Very short, simple letter of agreement, that's it.
Use priority.
But no full, no lease. It'd just be a month-to-month arrangement.
Okay.
So that, that's what he's conveyed to me to tell you.
I would, I would rather have a commitment for a certain amount of time, in case we're doing a month-to-month, we start getting comfy with it, and ultimately he says, no.
Well, the way we had done it in the past was at least through the winter, I mean, it's, you know, what's really vital is to have the sand and salt pile out there. And.
And at one point, he did send a letter requesting that this arrangement cease, but he gave, I don't know whether it was 30 or 60 days notice.
Didn't give us 60 days.
30, maybe.
He gave us 30 or less.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And what had we been putting on that property before? You said the sand and salt pile?
The sand and salt pile, we had had the graders back there. Right now, we've got the graders under storage, undercover at Bernstein for $100 a month. We have two or, I forget how many bays they've given us down there for the graders. But, you know, it's been, it's been an issue for the guys not to be able to, I mean, they have to be really careful about that sand and salt pile. So, you know, it's $200 a month, I'm gathering, Margie?
Yeah.
That's what it had been years ago?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, two years ago or?
Wasn't they just kept the sand pile there and they mixed it when they needed it out by there? Because they still needed it to keep the salt.
The salt has to stay in the shed, yeah. So, sorry, I may have said sand and, they mix it, yeah, that's right.
But then it hits a huge, it was a big pile.
Salt is, yeah. Yeah. Is Terry in favor of this?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, they could buy that, you know, all mixed, Karen, but it's a lot more expensive.
And it's not undercover and then it's.
Well, it's not undercover and then you lose it. I mean, if it rains.
You don't really lose it, but it does freeze up and it's, yeah, it's better undercover. I'm not going to dispute that.
Oh, yeah, yeah. All right, well, I would entertain a motion from the board.
To continue?
Well, to begin, to pay $200 to Peter Cross.
Yeah, I would make that, I would make that motion.
For the use of the property. All right, Ken made the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion?
Where does the money come from?
It's not in the budget right now. We'll have to try to find it somewhere.
Just spend, spend it over budget like we did with the sheriff?
Yep, we'll have.
You can't just take it out of the sand, like the winter sand salt budget?
Yeah, well, it'll have to. It'll have to. I mean, it's not budgeted in there right now.
Yeah.
But it'll have to somehow come out of the highway budget.
Yeah.
Wouldn't we save some, a little money by getting more bulk sand or, I don't know?
You don't have room for it over there, Mitch. You know, what they, what, I assume what they're doing is when they're working during the week, what they ought to be doing is when daily's open, you just buy what they've got, they've got mixed salt and sand down there, all mixed up in a pile, and then when it's warm, you buy straight sand. Because that works, if you put salted sand at 30 degrees on a, on the ice on the road, it falls right down through. Then when it gets cold at night, it glazes right over again. So when it's around just above or below freezing, you want to put unsalted sand on the road. And then it freezes right in, just like sandpaper. Yep.
Okay, so I'll call the question. You all sat? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous, Margie.
Who seconded that?
So would you, Mitch?
Who made the motion?
I did.
Ken. Would you come up with something? Oh, sorry, I thought Mitch did. Come up with something, you know, sorry, it's getting, we've been here a long time. We did not have a timeline on that.
amended to be.
At least through, through.
June, April?
June 1st.
Well, the other thing, you want to put the equipment back out there after that, don't you? The grader?
Well, I guess what I'm saying is what's really critical. In other words, that he not, you know.
How about just do a commencing date?
We can come back and turn it off by another motion.
Either party, it's month-to-month.
All right, we'll just leave it month-to-month and.
Say commencing, so this is December.
Commencing immediately?
Immediately.
Yeah.
But, you know, we should have at least some, something like a 30-day notice. I mean, I realize it's month-to-month, but we should have a 30-day notice, because obviously we're the ones that are going to be impacted if we get turned away again.
But this would also be predicated that we're halfway through December, so it would only be $100 that we would pay in.
Right. For the month of December. Okay, next on the budget, on the agenda is request for ballot article. We had, Ken, I think you had received this from Ed Corey.
Yeah, Ed Corey brought this down to me. It's dated December 6th. It says, "Shaftesbury Select Board, I am asking for a ballot article to be put on the ballot for March 4th, 2014 vote. Shall the town purchase the land next to the current garage formerly shared property? $410,000 for use of his site for new town garage, yes or no?" And then underneath it says, "I have been able to put the land on hold and have a signed contract at the much lower price of $110,000 than the open market price of $150,000. Thanks, Ed Corey." Since he gave me this and a copy of the contract underneath, he has put valid articles in the store and said he's going to try to get the number of people he needs or signatures he needs to put it on the ballot himself.
With that exact wording right there?
I saw it in the store, Karen, I didn't actually read it. He.
Okay, so, you know, if, if the board receives a petition with that language and it's signed by 150-some voters, then that language, exactly as it is written, has to be placed on the ballot. And when I read that, when I hear you read that, you know, we would need a legal ruling. We should pay to have an opinion from the town attorney as to what that would mean if that language went on the ballot. Is that, would that be considered an advisory vote? I don't know how the, you know, that, that type of vote would bind the board to purchase a piece of property without frankly negotiating. It sounds as though Mr. Corey has done the negotiating. It's, you know, the last time he negotiated, it was 150,000. It also makes it, you know, there's a lot of people frankly in this town who have for many years wanted to buy that piece of property, not for town garage. And any language like that, if it's binding, requires a town garage to be placed on that property, which frankly eliminates potentially for the next 60 years, doing anything to minimize the problems we have in Cole Hall. You know, we just had about an hour and a half discussion on constables and whether we would basically increase the number of staff of the town by two. Where would we provide a space for them? Where would we provide evidence? I mean, this, this building, you know, so you're taking that away for a very long time. And I, you know, I'm just not quite sure until we get some sort of a legal opinion as to that, you know, Ken, that that is the ballot, that he's, that's the language.
Well, this is what he gave me.
Passing around.
The one, I didn't really get a chance to read the one in the store. He told me that Timmy Corcoran was helping him draw it up.
Well, we should get a copy of that.
Okay, I'll see if I can, I'll see if I can get one.
Okay.
Maybe they'll copy that for me down there.
Bringing these to you.
That kind of brings up two things, doesn't it?
Can you hold on one sec, Tim? I'm sorry, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I think, given the late hour, I would suggest that we just do what you said and get a legal opinion on how binding the specific language of such a proposal is, and not get into at this time a debate about the specific merits of that proposal.
I'll try to get a copy of it, Tim.
Well, what I want is, and what Karen wants, is for the lawyer to tell us.
Yeah, but I mean, what I'm saying is what's in the store may not be exactly worded like this.
Okay, yes, please do, yes.
Oh, well.
You had something else, Ken, you want to add?
Well, it depends, like I say, what, what the wording on that is and what the lawyer says.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I mean, my first thought would be, if that was legal, if it passed, your only motive, the only thing you could do then is sell that land up there to make up the difference, to put toward the garage.
Right.
Well, I mean, it's just, you know, what else you going to do?
I, you know.
I think it's probably worth stating that the board's consensus is that we do not want, we do not agree with the spirit of that proposal and want to find out what the legal implications.
It's like shooting yourself in the foot, I would think.
Of such proposal going on the ballot are.
I think, I think that's right. I think that's right. I, it's, would we all agree the consensus of this board is that this would not be in the best interest of the town?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And you'll, you'll try to get ahold of whatever, whatever it is.
Yeah, I'll try to get a, I'll try to get a copy of that tomorrow.
Okay, thanks, Ken.
Yeah, no problem.
Margie, of all of these, let's see, the boards in commission, I'm looking at. Margie, of all of these, let's see, the boards and commission, I'm looking at discontinuance of Don Green.
Can I just take a motion? I mean, we all know...
I think, I think we might want to move forward just because we're in winter season and...
To begin the process?
Yeah, yep.
That is, it's a Title 19 process and the board would have to take formal vote, have a motion to discontinue Donald Green Road, Town Highway 83. That would have to be the motion.
So moved.
Do we have a second? And any discussion or questions?
Yeah, remind me what the situation is on Donald Green Road.
This is a, it's basically a driveway. It's off of Airport Road. I forget, it's a very short distance, but it literally goes from Airport Road up to the house.
Well, 300 yards long, maybe.
Yeah, maybe, maybe.
That might be stretching it.
That might be stretching it. It's owned by Peckham right now. They're leasing the home. Terry's feeling was that Peckham would probably end up plowing it for the homeowner. But it's a, you know, it's a narrow drive and, you know, we have to take a truck down there, turn them, and again, we're plowing someone's driveway essentially.
And Peckham is agreeable to us discontinuing?
That's what Terry has indicated to me. He has had conversations with them. Any other questions?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Margie.
Who was the second on that? Did we have a second?
Ken, did you second that?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, that's fine.
All right. Thank you, Margie. All right, the efficiency Vermont.
That's just going to be a quick update, to say that there is an efficiency Vermont program specifically geared to reducing, well, to replacing existing streetlights with more energy-efficient lighting. But it does, there, it does seem, when I look at some of the memorandums of understanding that you would enter into, raise the question of whether or not the town would ever find it advantageous to actually own its streetlights or not. So it's, I think it's a multifaceted issue. So we're not ready to bring that.
Do you know how they did it in North Bennington? I was wondering if they actually owned theirs.
It almost seems like they did.
It's worth, because they worth a lot more discussion and looking into.
Okay, all right. We have more to come.
More to come.
Now, we have the boards and commissions.
I was going to have my table, but I'll just take it from the town report.
Is that, is this our...
This is just our date right now to announce those that are... What I'd like to do is get it up on the website.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
That of the actually appointed boards and commissions, we have, well, the select board terms that are coming up that would be expiring would be Karen Mellinger, a two-year term expiring in 2014, which is March, and Carl Corman, who is in a three-year term, expiring March of 2014. We have an auditor term that would be vacant in March of 2014. They're three-year terms. This would be Lisa Lentz's position as auditor. Similarly, the Listers have a three-year term expiring in March of 2014. That would be Larry Johnson's. We have a trustee of public fund term expiring in March, and that would be William Fisk, who is our current town treasurer. Those are three-year terms. Now, the other appointed boards involve the Development Review Board and the Planning Commission.
I will not be seeking appointment to the Development Review Board. I do believe it should be separate from the select board. I'll get it to fill a position.
Okay. Yes, okay, so Mitch, you were appointed January 28th of 2013 to fill the remaining term of a three-year term expiring. So that will be vacant, that position, and Jay Palmer's alternate position appears to also expire in March of 2014. Likewise, I think it was Mike Biddy. And there's a Chris Williams' position as chair, well, position on the planning board is up, expires in March. That's a three-year term. 16, 15, and that is it for boards and commissions.
All right, so that'll go up on the website. And is that, did, I can't remember, Mitch, when we did our new appointment policy, is that noticed in the paper? We want to get that in the newspaper too?
January 1st or next.
Okay.
I don't know if I have a copy of it here or not. No, I don't.
And, you know, the town clerk has to notify, has to place her notices regardless for elections.
Jay, you'll have to put a letter of interest in.
All right. Anything more on that? When you're ready, Margie, if you want to move on to the town administrators.
Mitch just made a comment that makes me think we ought to make, as a courtesy to all our existing board members, make sure they know about the new new policy, like stick it in their mailbox.
Oh, I thought they'd already received it. They have not...
Yeah, I did. I sent it out to everybody.
Okay.
I don't know if they, if I know when to do it out or not, but yes, I will. I'll make sure they get it.
Of course, you're talking about just DRB and planning or...
Oh, just DRB and planning.
Okay, so, but we need to, yeah, we need to alert all of these folks who we've just mentioned because this...
Yep.
Yeah. Okay.
My report?
Yeah.
Oh, I really don't have much to say, except that we're moving ahead on the sidewalk project.
Yep.
And that the big news is that our design engineer thinks that we could go to construction.
This next construction season?
This next construction season, yeah, would be this, probably this summer, summer, fall.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
Where's that go from, Margie?
It's just around the corner, Trevor's Corner Parcel.
Yeah, it doesn't go down the avenue at all?
No.
Doesn't need to.
No, it's just to...
It goes around to, it goes around to...
Finish the corner.
It connects with the new sidewalk on both sides.
One section was left, it's still blacked out. It was narrow and...
The black top, the black...
I guess I better look at it.
Ken, the black top is on, is on...
On the north side.
Cleveland Avenue.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, that wasn't a part of, we weren't replacing that black top sidewalk.
Because there was one part there that, you know, it looked like it was, it wasn't up to snuff with the new part.
Right, right, right. But that, you know, they wouldn't give us grant money for sidewalk, you know, it was, it was just black top.
Basically, it's down Church Street, down by the post office, and up around the corner.
It's where it ends, not on the post office side. The new sidewalk will start on 7A
Yeah.
At the end of Trevor's, the southern end of Trevor's property, come around the corner and down Church Street to connect with the other concrete sidewalk that's there.
Oh, okay. I thought it went down further than that was on.
No, no.
Make sure they don't make the same mistake as North Bennington.
Oh, Lord.
Oh, yeah, by the bank, okay.
What a mess. What a mess. What a mess. Okay. Yeah, that was really good news, actually. Really good news. He seemed very optimistic that we would be able to go to construction this next year, so that was good. Assessment of current garage.
Well, I kind of need the board's advice right now. I'm not hearing back from my number-one idea for contact as to how to move forward on getting an assessment in place, so I don't know really who else to turn to. This was, quite frankly, was Jim Secor. Now, he'll probably catch up with me in the next day or so, but if for some reason he or elects not to perform the work for us or to, yeah, I, where do you want me to go? To a professional engineering consulting firm? I mean, I have no idea what budget we're looking at to perform this assessment with. This person's going to have to be putting some time in to also recommend costs for improving the garage if need be. So it's a little, it's a little vague. I mean, we know we're concerned, the most, the motion that read, and it's going to be in minutes that you have to approve, was that we, somebody perform an assessment, look into performing an assessment of the current, of the current physical plant and working conditions to assure employee safety and the town's liability.
Well, yeah, but I mean, that, has that ever been inspected by Volsa?
No.
I could not answer that question. I have no idea.
Not in the recent past.
Well, I mean, it should be up to Volsa standards anyway. We're looking...
Right, so the, my thought is still that it would be a professional engineer that does the assessment.
Let me, can I, can I do a little looking around and see if, I know some engineers of all types?
Oh, sure.
I mean, I'll just give a few a call and see what.
Yeah.
I mean, I've been in there, Margie, and I'm, you know, and it's not beautiful.
I mean, but the question is, I don't even know what kind of procurement policy to use because I have no idea what kind of costs we're going to be getting back. I mean, is it something I should have an ad in the paper for? Is it, I'm assuming that somebody could do a cursory inspection of the building if they knew their stuff. But they would probably have to bring in a couple of other people. You need somebody to assess electrical, like Peter Olney.
Yeah, John Edwards was on the building committee. He's, he's an engineer. Why can't we have him take a look at it?
Who's that?
John Edwards.
Is John a practicing engineer?
Yeah, is he still licensed or is he retired?
Well, I mean, he's still got the knowledge whether he's got license or not.
Sounds like what we need is something like a safety inspector, but a safety inspector that you hire to tell you if a building's safe. There's got to be people like that.
Yeah.
I mean...
Yeah.
I'm wondering if, given how divisive this issue is, if we ought to look outside Shasberry for...
Yeah, well, that was my thought too, also.
The one, the one question I have, we had Keefen Westner do the assessment. They used a Zemco, I forget, I don't even remember where they were from, if they were from Troy, or they were the original structural engineers that actually evaluated this building and...
Who was that one in North Bennington, Karen? There's an engineer down...
I'll call him.
Yeah, but I agree with Tim that, you know, maybe we just ought to, you know, go outside of the family right now.
Yeah.
And, you know, have, and maybe, you know, again, these folks looked at it previously. They were the ones that, they're certified engineers, professional engineers. They were the ones that told us, you know, rated in terms of the snow load. You know, there are a number of things. They talked about how, in order to, you know, what we needed to do to the roof to try to stabilize that, to meet code. But anyway, that might be a place to start.
Yep. Okay. All right, and used oil is still moving along. I'm inching now, but not, not taking strides. Let's just put it that way. I'm still trying to hear back from Clean Harbors. I'm not getting back. And I'm having to track down a third party, which I now have two names for, so...
Is that all the contract that's all signed with them guys or are we...
No, we, no.
We still have these diversion bids. All we do, we have these, these two estimates and they diverge by $5,000. We're just trying to close the gap and refine.
Is there any other companies around that do the same?
Oh, yeah, yeah. In fact, I was meeting today with a solid waste planner for Bennington Regional Planning Commission. And we were reviewing the proposals for the household hazardous waste collection days. So there are several firms that look positive, who would be interested. I have three more names.
Right, with that much difference, it just seems like things ought to get a little closer somewhere.
On that, I'd like the board to help me refresh my memory. There was a, what I thought was a glaring error in the minutes from the 25th meeting that said we agreed to a motion
That's what I thought so too.
To...
Award the contract.
To spend up to
I didn't...
...this amount. And my recollection was that was put forward and then just essentially dropped. Probably should have been formed a table, but...
Yeah, thank you. Right, I had that highlighted too. Motion to accept Clean Harbor's bid.
Yeah, we did not make that motion.
No.
Okay.
Well, I think we made it, but then we withdrew it because there was enough, you know, we weren't, it wasn't apples to apples, we realized, and so it was withdrawn. Yes, yeah. Okay, anything else, Margie? Does anyone...
Except about when we're going to meet next.
Well, yeah, that was, I was just going to ask in our other business, and then I do need to ask for a quick executive session to discuss a legal matter. But looking at the calendar, what does Thursday look like for folks?
I'm available.
I'm going to be out of town.
Oh, you are? Okay. When are you leaving, Tan?
I'll be gone all day. I have to go retrieve Son from college.
Okay, okay, okay.
Justice, we're down, yeah.
Is Wednesday too soon? Is Wednesday?
DRB's been canceled, so Wednesday...
I mean, we could meet even earlier in the day if that's more convenient for people.
Not before four.
Well, even four would be, could you make four? Ken?
Okay, unless it's snowing.
Yeah, we're supposed to have light snow Wednesday, but no, nothing more than that.
Margie, how would that fit with you?
Works fine for me.
I'd just really like us all to, you know, between now and then, take a look at the budget spreadsheet, some of the figures that Margie's put in.
Well, we have to revise the health again.
Yeah.
That's just that one.
Yeah, just that, just that one piece, yeah, yeah.
The constable budget is the big question mark.
You know, realistically, I...
I don't think it is a question mark. I don't think we can do anything that, like Ken said, until we vote.
We just leave it as it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, if that happens, it happens in the next year after the vote.
Yeah, and FY '16.
And then we've got what we've got and maybe there's not 20 hours for them.
And then we have...
You know, I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Yep, decisions to make about transfers to reserves.
Okay. Okay. Any other business, Tan?
So 4:00 PM budget, Mitch?
Wednesday?
Yeah, Wednesday, 4:00. Ken, any other business? Okay. Margie, nothing else?
No.
Okay, I do need to ask for an executive session to discuss a legal matter that was brought up by the zoning administrator. This is a matter that's been pending before the town regarding a zoning violation. So I asked for a motion to go into executive session?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.